So item twenty seven on our.
Yes, one thirty two is number twenty. She wants to have it deferred for thirty days.
Did you say thirty two?
Yeah, twenty twenty three, one thirty two, case number, item number twenty.
All right, let me cover a couple of things before we get started. There had. There are some slides that are showing up overhead. These slides have have been playing for the last couple of minutes and they tell you how today's meeting will go. So Planning Commissions received a packet in the mail that's huge. It's all of the zoning cases and everything that we're going to be talking about today. We've gotten a staff report from the RPA and Planning Commissions had the opportunity to review that in advance of today's meeting. And so at times during the meeting, we do actually move pretty quickly. And so make sure that you've got your agenda there in front of you and you follow along closely so that you know where we're at. In each case, as we come to it, I'm going to read off the case number, which you know is SD twenty twenty three dash zero zero three two. I'm going to ask if there's any opposition here. If you're here and you have questions or you have concerns, even if you would not have thought of yourself as being in opposition, but you're a neighbor and you've got questions or concerns, please make sure to raise your hand because I only say opposition. Every time I'll say, is there any opposition here? Every time, I mean, are you here and you want to talk or you've got some questions or there's some statement that you want to make? Please make sure you raise your hand because if you don't raise your hand, then I don't know you're here and you may not have the opportunity to be heard. In cases where we have, you know, a staff recommendation to deny or we have an opposition that's present, we're going to hear those cases and we're going to start out by hearing the staff presentation first for your benefit because a lot of you will not have seen the staff presentation. We've already got the staff presentation, but we're going to hear the staff presentation. Then after we hear the staff presentation, we're going to give the applicant an opportunity to come up and speak. We're going to give the applicant the microphone here. They're going to have seven minutes to present all the reasons for their case. And there may be some questions back and forth between the Planning Commission members and the applicant or the applicant's engineers or whoever the applicant wishes to have speaking on their behalf. When that's done, they're going to sit down and all the opposition is going to have an opportunity to speak. The time is limited to nine minutes for all opposition. So one of the things that I have the unfortunate responsibility to do is to limit that time to nine minutes. We have three, four pages of cases on our agenda today. And so we do strict stick very closely to the nine minutes. And so from time to time, I have to interrupt people and I apologize in advance, but I will do it. And you'll have to stop talking when I interrupt you because that means that there are a number of people behind you that also wish to speak. So what needs to happen when there's opposition? It's really important that you get out of your chair and you line up down the right side of the room behind the person at the microphone because I need to see if there's three people that want to speak in that nine minutes or whether there's thirty people that want to speak in those nine minutes. And I'm going to do some real quick math and I'm going to say, okay, there's only fifteen seconds per person. It is what it is. So and then when you come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. I will say, one of the ways that you can help us as a planning commission make better decisions is if you're here and you're speaking in opposition in regards to a case, don't repeat the same things that everybody else has said. We're paying attention. We're here to hear what it is that the applicant wants, what staff is recommending, and we're here to hear from the public. So if you've heard it said, don't say it over and over and over again because from time to time, we'll have cases where everybody gets up and for three minutes, they tell us the exact same thing over and over again, which is not a good use of their time or our time. So then when they're done, all of the opposition sits down. When when I say time's up, time's up and all public comment is over. There's no public comment from the crowd. Only the person at the microphone has the privilege to speak. So once we're done with public comment, we're done. The applicant will come back up to the mic. The applicant will have two minutes to respond to what they've heard from opposition. There may be some more back and forth between the Planning Commission and the person at the microphone. And then we'll make a decision. In most cases, we're making a recommendation to either the county commission or the city council. Make sure to follow along for those follow-up dates because in some of what we do today will be final action, but the vast majority of all of our zoning is all a recommendation to the county commissioner or city council. So with that, we will. Was there anything I missed?
Oh, I think you covered everything.
One other thing that's important too is that there are some of there, there, there's a case on the agenda or four cases on the agenda where the vast majority of you are here for that one case. I know that. We're going to take action on that case. You may or may not be happy with what you hear today. Out of respect for all of staff, out of respect for the volunteers that serve on planning, planning commission and all the other people that are here for their other cases because there are, you know, thirty cases on the agenda day, please make sure to file out of the room quietly and respectfully and make sure that the door is closed behind you because one of the problems we run into is that, you know, thirty, forty people will leave this room and they will stand right outside the door and it will get really loud and then we're not able to to go on with our business. So hopefully we can have a really successful meeting here today. First item under subdivision plaits and variances. And it's item one on our agenda is SD twenty twenty three dash zero zero three two. And it's a final plat and it's at Sweet Briar Phase one C and two. Lots thirty three through fifty, one thirty four through one thirty seven and one forty six through one fifty nine located at six four two four Snow Hill Road. And it has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? Okay. And is the applicant present? Okay, you're the applicant. All right. Mr. Schultz, one of the things that can be helpful for opposition on final plat cases is if you tell the if you tell everybody what it is that our responsibility is here today in regards to a final plat.
Sure. Final plaits are formality. The preliminary plat has already been reviewed and approved for compliance with the subdivision regulations. This is a formality. They've already gone through permitting levels for land disturbance permits. Those type procedures that are adopted by the county. This is again approved as preliminary plat unless there's something substantially going to impact the public health and safety, which is you have to have proof of that, just not hearsay at the meeting. There's really nothing the planning commission can do to deny the plat if it's in conformance with the sub regs and all the requirements. We have looked at this as a staff and it does meet those requirements. This is a phase development. This is again phase one C and two accessing off Snow Hill Road. Preliminary plat was approved about two years ago and staff recommended to approve. This is a final plat.
Just one thing for staff and you may, it's in our packet. Do you have the the third and the fourth phase or additional phases? Do you show that relative to? Because I know this was a phase development initially had some connections across the creek over to a phase that that fronted on on transport lane, but but there's an additional phase past this phase, correct?
Correct. It's not shown on the screen. It is in your packet. It's actually crossing the stream over actually to the right of the screen. That's not what we're hearing today. We're hearing, we're hearing phase one C and two.
I know, I know what they're asking for at least from a phasing, but it's the, it's the phase just north of this one that's in our packet that shows a future connection, secondary connection to Snow Hill. Is that, is that in the, on the presentation or just in the packet?
It's just in the, just in the packet. That's a different phase.
Fair enough. Thank you.
This is existing, using the existing connection on Snow Hill.
All right. With that, if the applicant's okay with it, we'll hear from opposition first. Are you okay with that? Okay, so if you're here and you're, and you want to speak in regards to this final plat and hopefully you've heard what Mr. Schultz has said in that if this development complies with the subdivision regulations and you as the opposition cannot prove otherwise, then we will approve it today and have the obligation to approve it. But you're welcome to speak. Total of nine minutes. There's a clock somewhere and there's a little light.
It's over here.
Okay. Thank you.
Those are some pictures of the first left turn lane that was approved on Snow Hill Road. Oh, it's Kim Hilton eighty six eighteen Snow Hill Road. So at many of these remote zoning meetings, we've heard that a lot of things are taken care of in permitting. And you said that this has already gone through permitting. So this is something that went through permitting already. And the turn lanes for this development were supposed to be implemented in the permitting phase. So the minutes from the June nineteenth, twenty nineteen Hamilton County Commission meeting stated, and I quote, Todd Lehman provided details regarding the traffic study submitted on June tenth. The study recommended a two-way left turn lane to be installed at both entrances on Snow Hill Road. He noted the turning lanes would be required during the permitting process. The traffic study data consisted of turning movement counts from seven to nine and two to six, collected two days before the last day of school after seniors had graduated. It also had T dot data from a traffic count located past Studebauer High School, which would put, which would not include a large amount of school traffic. Speed data gathered by the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office was collected over a five-day period starting the day after the last day of school. The traffic study data was understated. And that seems to be a theme. We don't know why Hamilton County accepts traffic studies that do not include all or in some cases, no school traffic. T dots guidance says the traffic study should be a typical day. The traffic study did not collect data for a twenty-four hour period. Despite all of this, the traffic study still recommended a two-way left turn lane at both entrances on Snow Hill Road. This traffic study included crash data from sixty one hundred to sixty nine hundred blocks of Snow Hill Road from January twenty fifteen to January twenty nineteen. In that time, there were forty-eight crashes with two fatalities. There have been more wrecks and more fatalities in the years outside of this study. A few months after this study in August twenty nineteen, there were two crashes in a twenty-four hour period. One of those involved this property. The vehicle went through the outer fence, across the field and through an interface, which would be where homes are today. The other wreck involved entrapment. We were told that the left turn lane was constructed, that was constructed at the first entrance was approved by the Hamilton County Engineering Department, but they later removed it after seeing the design in person. So Snow Hill Road was changed back to its original state. The left turn lane was not designed well to say the least, and it was not a two-way left turn lane. The transition around the turn lane was very abrupt and hard for vehicles to negotiate. A school bus would have a difficult, if not impossible, time of navigating that design. It also had dangerous drainage issues, which is the third picture that we were told had been fixed, but we still see standing water in the blocked off lane that we would have been traveling in. And we are grateful that we are not traveling in it today. We don't understand why the developer is not required to make a new design at that time because there were no houses that had been built next to Snow Hill Road. So why weren't they required to use more land from the development to make a better transitioning turn lane? At the time when we called to voice concerns about the design, we were told that the reason it was designed that way was because neighboring properties would not give up some of their land. Why should anyone give up their land for a development on someone else's property? Turn lanes are supposed to be the responsibility of the developer and should be taken from the land in the development. Now there are houses right next to to Snow Hill Road and there's no left turn lane at the first entrance. We have been told that there will be no turn lanes at the second entrance, including the left turn lane that was supposed to be required in permitting. And no land is being set aside from the development to add one in the future. So the understated traffic study recommended a left turn lane at both entrances. Todd Lehman said they were required in permitting. Now there will be no left turn lanes for this development. An already extremely dangerous road has just gotten worse. The Tennessee Code, Hamilton County zoning regulations and Hamilton County subdivision regulations state the importance of the safety and general welfare of citizens when land is developed. So we feel that this is not in line with Hamilton County subdivision regulations. Also, in the subdivision regulations, it states that the second entrance must be in place before the final plat is signed. And they had just started on the second entrance and we don't think it's been completed yet. I wasn't able to drive past there today on the way here. So it has not been completed. So why would you approve the final plat if it's supposed to be in, you know, installed, constructed before the final plat because it has more than two hundred homes? We feel that our government agencies are not taking the safety of everyone that travels on Snow Hill Road and the other two lane roads in our area seriously. If the Wolf River Plan had been followed as the Tennessee Code requires, Snow Hill Road would not be as congested as it is today. There are over seven hundred homes approved on Snow Hill Road that have not been built yet and will add even more traffic on Snow Hill Road. Traffic congestion and safety will be worse than it is today. So these left turn lanes are important for the safety of residents and travelers on Snow Hill Road.
Mr. Chairman, there's about three and a half minutes left. I think there's other, let's say.
Thank you. Did somebody else wish to speak in regards to this case? Okay. An applicant come up? Mr. Raymond.
Charles Share, North Point Surveying, was surveyors of record for the project. We feel like that we've complied with everything the planning commission has asked us to do. And although we sympathize with the people out there, we have followed regulations and and feel like that we're entitled to the final approval of this phase of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lehman, I think. Mr. Share, just because I won't make a few statements, but I do want to ask you a question. This is not the final plat for the development, correct? It's just an additional phase.
Correct.
And and how many lots is this? How many lots is this subdivision that you, that you're? I counted thirty-five. Does that sound about right?
It's in this phase.
And then the first phase that was done is about a hundred and sixteen. I just counted them. Okay. So that's all. Got a few more, says he. Thank you.
Commissioner Hollander.
Thanks, sir. There will be a, sir, there will be a second lane when you do the, the second IGRIS. Well, well, the, well, you're the surveyor.
Yes.
There will, there will be, maybe that's a question, Mr. Lehman. There will be a left turn. Okay.
And I don't know if you're, Sharon, I don't know if you're the one to to speak to this or not. I know you just did the survey, survey and I can't remember. I think Reagan Smith may be the engineer. I don't remember exactly who the engineer is, but what I guess the point I wanted to make and I appreciate the comments. Yeah, there were some issues with that initial entrance. I think some of the comments you were talking about were relative to the overall development. There is a secondary access that is north of this that has not gone through any submitter permitting or approval by engineering staff and that connection or that phase, depending on when it happens, if it's, if it's above the two hundred lot threshold, which at that point, engineering requires a secondary entrance. That entrance will be then evaluated under the same traffic conditions that the, that the southern one was. So I, I, I think to your point that the, the southern one under, under the purview of of our departments was not installed appropriately. And so it was removed and at some point when there's the, the traffic that's being generated both by the northern entrance with a left turn lane and the southern entrance will make some modifications. But thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that is correct. What Commissioner Lehman's saying, the secondary entrance is just north of this, of this plant. This, all this traffic is falling down to this existing entrance to the south.
And and not part of this final plat?
Correct, correct. And the two hundred, the number of the two hundred is a prior code issue. Once you get two hundred lots, you have to have a secondary access point, which they have not reached that at this point.
Thank you. What's well, the commission? We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next case on the agenda, item two is SD twenty twenty three dash zero zero three three. And it's the inlet phase three lots forty-nine through sixty-four, ninety-five through one oh five, one twelve, one fifteen through one sixteen. And has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Berg, recused himself. Who's taking minutes? Where are those?
We got him now here.
Okay. Did you catch that?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is SD twenty twenty three dash zero zero three five. It's a preliminary plat for East Brainerd Townhomes, lots one through one thirty-three. Located at eighty-eight twelve, eighty-eight sixteen East Brainerd Road has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, on this next case, twenty twenty three thirty-six, recently have a, on the staff recommendation to approve since the planning commission, I mean, since the packet was created, we found out that Fire Marshal has some issues with the secondary access point on this development. We need to defer this request so they can work out those secondary access points because this number, the total number of lots in this development will exceed two hundred and they need a secondary access point.
We can defer for how long?
Sixty days.
How long do you want to?
How long, the applicant may want to speak to that. I just know there's some issues.
What is, what is, what, what time is being requested by staff?
I'd say we say thirty days until next month to get that worked out.
Is the applicant present? We're on case SD twenty twenty three dash zero zero three six. It's the retreats at White Oak Phase two lots one eighty-two through two fifteen. Had, had a staff recommendation to approve, but I guess staff wants to suggest or recommend deferring that for.
The Fire Marshal, the Fire Marshal has looked at it and need the secondary access point issue.
For thirty days. So we have a motion and it has been seconded. Is the applicant present? All in favor? I, I don't, I don't see applicant. All in favor of the motion to defer for thirty days? Please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Chairman, I accuse. Mr. Berg recused himself. Next case on the agenda is SD twenty twenty three dash zero zero three seven. It's located at eight five two six, eight five five eight. Kestley Trail and the variance has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're taking, just to kind of cover the agenda again, for those of you who weren't here when we first started, case, item twenty on our agenda, which is case twenty twenty three dash zero one three two. It's located on Lightville, Lightfoot Mill Road. That, that case is being deferred. And case twenty twenty three dash zero one three zero is also being deferred. So neither one of those cases will be heard today. All right. Why do we have so many people standing in the room? Are there not enough seats? If you can find a seat, there are also some seats upstairs. I need the left wall clear in particular behind the. All right, next. We're going to get into the amendments and resolutions. So we have an amendment to the Channing subdivision regulations. And it's to delete and amend certain street standard requirements. And prior to this meeting, the planning commission has received comments from the fire department that have been forwarded to us from the RPA. We've received comments from the Home Builders Association. Is Doug Fisher here yet? He may. And then we've also received some other comments from staff. So I'd like if we could to take action on that now. I would. The way we're going to handle this is we, we have, we have a staff recommendation for the subdivision regulations, just like we do any other case. There is some opposition to some of those changes in regards to subdivision regulations. And I want to hear that. Staff is not going to present. So we have a total of nine minutes for in this case, the opposition, which is those who are opposed in some form or fashion to the subdivision regulations to speak to the specifics of the opposition in regards to those regulations. So if you'd like to speak in regards to the subdivision regulations, please come on up to the mic. You want to speak in regards to the subdivision regulations? Okay.
Mr. Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I, I do have a comment if it's appropriate. I do know that the, there, there is a areas. The professionals agree with this thing. What I would like to do if, if appropriate, is just.
Now, I, I don't. I don't know that, I don't know. My concern is I don't know how that actually works. If we approve some portion of the subdivision regulation, we don't approve all. You know, so at the end of this, we have to, we have to approve an entire section four hundred. And we can't have any part of it missing. And so I, I would agree with you. We do have, we do have this in, in front of us here and we've got these labels for things where there tends to be a lot of people agreeing on what needs to be done. And then we have these others that are red where it's obvious that people do not agree on how it gets handled. Maybe we go through those and if we could, what we could do is let's say, for example, if I'm reading this correctly, page six of twenty-three, four zero one point one point three point one is the first area where there seems to be some people disagreeing on how that language is written. If we could hear comments on that, we as a planning commission, somebody could make a motion to say, approve it as read, approve it with this change. We can take action on just that one item as a standalone placeholder. And then after we've worked our way through these dozen problem areas, then we could adopt the document in its entirety with all of the amendments. Does that, does that work? I mean, will you, would you be able to track with that whoever's keeping minutes?
We'll try. It'll be recorded as well. Let's go back.
Well, if it doesn't work, we'll just back up and punt, but I, I think it'll work. So ma'am, do you want to, we, we've got only, let me, let me also say that for those of you who are here and it looks like we don't know what we're doing, this is not something we do every day. So we're glad you're here and that you get to watch it. This is rulemaking in its rawest form. What has happened, for those of you who don't know, is that for a long, long time in Hamilton County, we have not had street standards in our subdivision regulations. And we are very excited to have the opportunity to add street standards to the subdivision regulations. Staff has been working with internal departments at the city of Chattanooga to establish these regulations in regards to how our streets are built. And now this is the process where they are made into law. So congratulations, you have the opportunity to watch it happen. We don't do this every day. We make a lot of zoning changes and those sorts of things, but we don't make wholesale changes to our subdivision regulations very often. So ma'am, if you'd like to speak, come on up to the mic and state your concern. State your name and address as well.
Yes, my name is Olga Baker and I, I live in seventy-four twenty-one Savannah Drive, Ottawa. And my concern is maybe you already are doing this. I don't know, but the, we have the same one-way lane, very narrow. The pedestrians cannot walk on the side of the street. And we, we, we see so many. And, uh, we, we, we see so many projects, uh, being built and the same, uh, narrow roads and that is dangerous. So I think that if you are going to build so many subdivisions, first, uh, it should be, uh, roads. So we don't, uh, run into, uh, dangers like accidents or pedestrians getting, getting run over, you know? So that's my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So item fourteen on our agenda. Mr. Fisher, do you want to speak in regards to that? Come on up to the mic.
Savannah.
Well, you see it here, it's four, four, zero, one, point, one, point, three, point, one. The evidently, the development community has some concern with some portion of this.
Yes, sir. So just a, a brief history, if you might, and I think it'd be even helpful for your audience.
Sure.
Which, um, that maybe has not seen any of this process. So as y'all, as you, I think most of you know, we've pretty much gone through this process for, for a, a year almost.
Yes, probably not longer.
And yeah, and all of those meetings have been to the interest of your predecessor, uh, Commissioner Ledford, um, all open and public meetings wherever the public was invited to all these work sessions. And I guess we probably went through, I'm going to say six different work sessions. Um, and through that process of attempting to, uh, modernize, if you will, section four oh one, we went through literally fifty articles of which thirty-nine, I think would be correct, leaving us about eleven. Thirty-nine that we came to terms with staff and agreements to, and, and again, when I say for, for historical information, this is a room full of Chattanooga's foremost engineers, uh, the most experienced engineers and probably even more importantly, the most involved engineers, people that are in here, in and out of here, uh, week in and week out, asking you for various, uh, subdivision changes, regulation changes, zoning changes, so on and so forth. So it's not like it was an inexperienced bunch of people just throwing darts at this thing. Between the staff and our experienced professionals, again, we've come up to and to Commissioner Matthews' point that I thought would have been a really great suggestion. I understand that procedurally, if you can't do it, then you can't do it. But in, in essence, I think you could almost pass thirty-nine articles without anybody throwing objection. And then we can fuss and fight over the remaining balance of the eleven, that there, there are some contention between us over what, what they should read and how they should say. I get it.
If, if there's a fuss and fight to be had, let's, let's have the fuss and fight. And then if, if we can work our way through that, then we can pass the subdivision regulation.
Mr. Chairman, I'm all for that. I was prepared when we looked at the agenda, this was going to be on the tail end of the agenda and I was prepared to be here till seven or eight or nine or ten o'clock at night. I doubt most of these people are, uh, and I have to say that if you stick with your standard procedural habits, nine minutes to defend fifty-four articles is going to be.
We're okay with that.
Okay.
We being aye. Okay. I mean, let's, let's do what we gotta do.
Good.
I mean, it can't go worse than our last time. I don't think.
If you limit this to nine minutes, is that per, per article or the entire?
I don't think, I don't think you'll need nine minutes. We'll, we'll, we'll give you enough time that you're able to articulate an argument in regards to why it's an issue.
Very good.
And then when, when we've heard enough or the, or it's been properly communicated, I'll determine that and we'll move on.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Just a procedural question, Chairman. So, uh, Mr. Fisher asked about the nine minutes. Past that nine minutes, our practice is if a, if a member of this commission, not the audience, but if a commission member has a question for someone who has spoken, of course, that can come after the nine minutes.
That's, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, point of clarity on the process for approving or disapproving a item in opposition. Would that item then be an up and down vote on staff version and or suggested language? And how would we?
So my thought is, let's take fourteen, for example. Everybody know what I'm talking about when I say fourteen? Four, zero, one, point, one, point, three, point, one. There's some sort of disagreement there. We're going to hear from folks in the audience. We're going to hear from staff if need be, and then we're going to make it, we're going to take up and down action on the language that is going to go into the subdivision regulations on fourteen. Then we're going to go on to whatever the next red one is, which is sixteen. And we're going to modify the language. However, this planning commission sees fit and we're going to take up and down action on that one. We're going to work our way through all the ones that are red, then on to eighteen. And then, once all that's done, we're going to adopt subdivision regulations.
So the language in our, excuse me, language in our packet that we will be reading off from is all staff recommendation.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, uh, there are, in some that I don't even count in the eleven disagreements, there are tweaks inside of one, two, three, four, five, six, all the way through. Some of them are literally just grammatical errors and things. So, and I'm not sure that you have in front of you when, uh, Commissioner Ledford says, um, that what you have in front of you came from R P A. I would hope that each of you also have a copy of what came from the, uh, professional worker.
I, I don't know what everybody has in front of them.
I certainly know.
But I guess we'll find out.
Well.
Staff hasn't supplied us with what came from, I mean, it's not in our packet.
No, well, the only thing is your packet is what staff, uh, provided, which is the, uh, staff recommendation. Does it not include what the home builders or the design officials submitted?
And we independently sent each commissioner a copy of that as well. So maybe some of you have, some of you don't. And, and I might add just real quickly, again, procedurally, we would want to be totally respectful of the general public. If a member of the general public has comments on these, but in the event that they don't, each article, we have an assigned engineer to address. So we will be sending out of our bullpen, next one, the next one, and the next.
So the, the copy that I have in front of me has some, I think it's directly from you. It's got some blue.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Where?
That's correct.
So if, I mean, let's just talk about it if we need to.
Yes.
Uh, first item under, uh, is four, zero, one point, one.
I'm going to have you back up to number five.
Mr. Chairman, you want me to start the clock? Is this part of that discussion, is this, is this question answering right now?
Yeah, we can start the clock. When you're saying back up to five, what, where are you talking about?
Section number five. It is green, but we had a couple of minor tweaks on that.
Yes, sorry.
They were handing out, um, a copy. The first one that you'll see has some blue writing on it. Those are the proposed changes. And then the second page, um, has the staff copy so that you can look at them side by side and compare. Uh, A and B, we're fine with. Um, item number C, it talks about the ninety-day effective date. We've added a section that says as well as notifying the engineering and surveying community.
Mr. Chairman, so we can help for us to take notes and stuff. When we say article five or section five, we reference the section number of the sub-rates like four oh one point, one.
Certainly.
Because I don't think the audience or anybody has this.
Certainly.
So under four, let me just help out a little bit if I could. Does staff have any, do, do you have a copy of this?
I just now, I just now got it.
Okay.
We're going to hand them out, I think, every time we come up to a section that we're going to discuss.
Chairman, I don't think we were prepared to do nine minutes for every section of these sub-rates. That would be hours of public comment from the professional community whose comments were submitted two weeks ago to this group.
Yeah, I, we're not going to do nine minutes. Don't, don't worry about that. We're not going to give them nine minutes on, on some of this language. I do think some of it, we might need that, but, um, so staff, staff got these comments? Are, are these the same comments that you'd had before?
Yes, they're all the same comments unless they've made some change.
On five, the, the, um, on four, zero, one, point, one, the development community has added some language in blue. Does staff take any issue with any of the language that was added in?
So all of the staff comments that were submitted, the staff proposal from Public Works and R P A, that's the staff position. So it's going to be staff position. It's not going to change from what was submitted earlier. The, the comments that you got from the development community are the comments from the development community. And we're not going to, we're going to not going to have an opinion on those. We're just going to, we've asked the new county and this is, the comments that are in the sub-rates are from Public Works. And we have a county engineer who's in charge of Public Works, who's, is, is his positions, he's ratified, what was his staff positions, excuse me, city engineer. Um, city Public Works. But either way, R P A is just the staff to help facilitate this. So our comments are what the Public Works Department's comments.
Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Dan, uh, if I'm reading this correctly and I've been in a position similar to this, uh, running a meeting efficiently, so I, I will go ahead and go out on a limb. Are you, uh, R P A, uh, will stand in objection to any suggestions that are being made in this document?
Absolutely. I mean, not, I mean, we support the public works.
That was what I just thought I heard was you, you stood in ob, like you presented your, your document and you stand on that document and the changes that have been suggested, you are not in objection to some of these?
Um, the Public Works Director, um, the new one, um, has reviewed the proposed changes from Public Works and from R P A helped facilitate. And he has supported what that proposal was. It's a staff proposal to you as planning commission.
Understood, but we have a document in front of us with suggestions for amendments. And I need to know whether you stand on your document without these suggestions in objection to each item.
As I recall, they did not have any changes when they reviewed it. Is that correct, Eric? Did anybody, did Public Works have any comments of additions? I don't think we, we're going to stand beside that behind the staff proposal.
Okay, so when I hear that, I hear.
We have no, you, the planning commission can take whatever action.
None of the changes that are being presented in this document are being supported by, maybe if we go, go down that road, are being supported by, uh, Public Works or C dot?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'm just saying, and I, we've referenced both, so I want to make sure that they're mentioned as well. Okay, so, um, Mr. Chair, thank you. We need to figure out a way to be able to address the suggested language and in order to make proper motion to planning commission wills that so.
So the shepherd's put here in front of us, four oh one point, four oh one, point, one. The, the added language of as well as notifying the engineering and surveying community. Is there any objection on planning commission to adding that language? Entertaining motion to adopt that language on C. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. On E, the, um, language is being slightly modified. It looks like, um, it's with a word of a major subdivision.
Would you accept the motion to accept this, this entire section as?
Yes.
A sumo.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six, seven, eight, nine, and ten are good. Eleven, good, twelve. You want to speak on twelve, four oh one, point, one, point, two, point, seven?
Uh, yes, sir. And if we could, can we still talk about eleven?
We didn't see any changes there. What, what, what is there to talk about on eleven?
Uh, I'm going to pass out what the staff's recommendation was and on eleven, it doesn't show any blue text because we, we proposed eliminating some.
Gotcha. Go ahead, Mr. Chambers.
Uh, yeah, thi- this has to do with split streets and how, you know, the city normally doesn't like to see a lot of split streets, but there are instances where they do make a lot of sense. Um, you know, we're, we're fortunate to be working with a, a team of engineers who work all over the country. And we see other areas where maybe there's parks or large medians or other public humidity spaces, uh, as part of a split street. And we just like the flexibility to do that. While it's not standard, we just like to do that with the approval of the city's jurisdictional engineer.
Any questions for the opposition here?
Just so I'm clear on the, sorry.
Go ahead. Mr. Maybe and then Mr. Steel.
Uh, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that. So for, in, before any of these could be used though, the city engineer would have to sign off on it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bird.
So the implication of this change in this language is that it would be part of the R P A's pre-review to send this to the engineer and include that in their report without the need for requesting variance? I'm just confused at what the.
That's correct. If you approve the variance procedure as it's with, um, the ability to have design changes, then it would be a variance.
Okay.
Any questions? For Mr. Chambers? What's the rule of the commission on eleven? Four oh one, point, one, point, two, point, six. The language agreed, the use of split streets must be reviewed for approval by the city jurisdictional engineer or designate. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Mr. Lehman?
Just clarification, uh, because I, because I think what we got from the home builders is a, is a modified shortened version and then what was just passed out. So I, I just want to make sure I understand the motion. And I, and I would, I guess I'll ask you at the podium, your, your recommendation or what you're asking the change would be what you just passed out, correct?
I, I believe that's the case. I believe you have the, the staff's recommendation up top and the recommended down below and I can read the recommendation if needed.
Well, I, I think the one that we had, I think that was submitted that a lot of us are using for review, just has one of those sentences. So I just, I wanted to clarify the motions and make, make sure we can come out.
Staff understand what the motion is?
Yes, we like to leave, leave it on the bottom, so the motion will be.
Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Chambers on twelve.
Yes, sir. Um, this has to do with the public alleyways and secondary streets. Uh, an important item is A there, where we talk about lot frontages. You know, we, we do have the opportunity to work with a lot of traditional neighborhood design, a lot of new urbanist projects. And I don't want that to be, uh, eliminated, uh, from our, from our vocabulary. And so when we talk about the, the need for, um, lots to have frontages on a street, we, we understand that from addressing emergency services standpoint. Uh, but we do want to have the ability to do alleyways, uh, as not the primary access. And so section A there, we just say, hey, if, if, um, you know, we have a proposed lot frontage and the primary access is by way of an alley, that, that's not allowed, right? We, we should be able to have the, the public access of the street and the, and the private alley and the access in the back. Does that, does that make sense? So I, I think this is an area where, and I don't want to speak for staff, but I think we're, we're somewhat aligned that we shouldn't have landlocked lots somewhere that don't have access to it, to, to public streets. We're just saying, hey, you can't have, um, lots whose only fringe, uh, is it? Can we read this? What we're proposing here is saying proposed lots whose only lot fringe and primary access is by way of an alley shall not be permitted. I believe that's, that's eliminating the possibility of landlocked lots, which I think is what, I want to speak for them, but I think that was the goal.
Any questions for Mr. Chambers? It's a little commission on four, one, point, one, point, two, point, seven.
I move to approve for four oh one, point, one, point, two, point, seven, A.
As presented?
As presented by Mr. Chambers. As presented by Mr. Chambers.
Mr. Schultz, do you have that?
I do.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Question two. So I want to make sure during this process, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, when we're talking about and making a motion on recommendations, we have recommendations in blue that are written in front of us. We're getting a second document handed to us that has a lot of things crossed out. Um, so I want to make sure when we're voting on a motion or a change or amendment in this case, that we are voting for what we are seeing in blue, because I'm seeing a lot of crossed out language and individual sheets being provided as a secondary document. I was not prepared to see secondary.
The confusion is that we got this.
Yeah.
And that we've all got, and then you're giving us this.
And you're giving us this, and the two aren't meshing up.
So, what we are doing is presenting both side by side so that you can see by section what the proposed changes are. And when you see anything that is in blue and what is referenced is a, uh, advisory group, then, then that is the change in the proposed language that we're asking for. So that's, that's, if you see blue in the staff version, that's just the font that they use. We use blue as a font to designate changes.
I believe the, so, the version that is in our packet is the version from staff. And then there is a version that was emailed to all of us from this professional advisory committee. And that's the, I, I have it pulled up right here, and it seems to be the same, as what is being presented here on the bottom, in the blue text, and it's usually labeled APV. I don't know what that stands for, but they have it labeled staff, and then they have it labeled APV, APR. I'm not sure what that says, but.
Going forward, I think I can assure you, talking to our other engineers, that it, nothing will be any different than what you receive from us in terms of our changes that are in blue going forward.
Thank you. All right, um, you seconded that motion. And that was in regards to and it was limited to just A. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And on B?
It looks like there's a typo on B, Mr. Chambers. What was intended here, alleys and or secondary right of ways, is there supposed to be a dash there, is only one of those words intended?
Fair, fair question, I, I think there might be a couple of typos there. Um, but, but yeah, it should be a slash. Should be and or.
What's the will of the commission? Move to approve section four oh one B. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And on C? Mr. Anderson?
What are trucks going to do for turnarounds on less than 150 feet? In the, in the HVA GC recommended version?
Fair enough, keep in mind, this is, um, regarding alleyways and secondary streets. Uh, so not the primary access for a street, so most city services are going to be on the public street out front and not in the alleyway. Uh, the 150 feet foot length actually comes from international fire code, and this is being consistent with that international fire code version. And, and they're probably, and, and they don't limit that to only alleyways, they say even public streets can be 150 foot at dead end. Uh, the idea being that the truck can back up 150 feet, it's not that far. Um, and so certainly the way we see it, if it's okay with the fire department, consistent with international fire code, it should certainly be okay as a secondary access in the alleyway that doesn't need a huge turnaround for something that's not the primary access for, for a, a structure.
Please, Councilman Luthier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so, uh, in that regard, I live in a neighborhood where we have a private alleyway in the back serving the back of our homes, and we do not allow, uh, city trucks and heavy trucks to, because they were not constructed to the quality of the, the, the main streets, the main connector street, so is that where you're going?
Yeah, that, that's absolutely what we're talking about here, and, you know, keep in mind, 150 foot a dead end link, that's, that's three houses.
Yeah.
Right, so we're talking about three houses bringing their personal vehicles and turning down that, that alleyway.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion to approve, has amended, and it has been seconded in discussion, Mr. Lehman. Did you have something you want to say?
No, no, I would, I mean, I, I just, I'm I guess if it's providing access for city surfaces, city Public Works has said, we don't want to back back out. Um, I, I can understand Councilman Ledford's point about not, and, and I guess I'm just wondering how that, so if you have a private alley that does not allow for ci- city services, city services, I can see that being 150 feet, I guess my only point would be that if, if city services are going to use the street, um, it may be more beneficial to have a appropriate turnaround, but, but I, I'll, I'll yield to the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Did you also oppose? Mr. Hollander opposed as well. Brian, do you have this, when they're handing it out, you, you've got?
I'm getting a copy.
Okay, you've got what we've.
Yeah, yes, and I think Eric's got a copy, him has got a copy, we're trying to keep up.
Okay. All right, four oh one point, one point, two point eights, fine, four oh one point, one point, three point one, Mr. Price?
Yes, sir, uh, which is section 14. We only have one change we would request, which is item C. And the current language says connect neighborhoods. Our requested language is to encourage connectivity when appropriate and suitable. As you all know, there are plenty of cases that come before this commission where neighborhoods adjoining proposed developments, they do not want connectivity. The way it is currently written, we have no choice but to connect, so we think that encouraging it is the proper language, but we certainly need to recognize that the rights of those that may be adjoining may not want that connectivity. So that's why we're asking for a change as it relates to item C, and that's the only change in that section.
Just for the rec, we get what that section number is?
That section is four oh one point, one point, three point one, C. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve as amended, because in my district and in my experience, uh, the people who come to meetings and community meetings, uh, actually would like to have that choice, and, uh, some of the neighborhoods do not want to be connected, even though I know that that helps alleviate traffic and sometimes counterproductive to, uh, some of the arguments that we listen to, but, uh, I think that, uh, I understand where the neighborhoods are going, and I think it reflects a little bit more on the will and the desire of the people, so we'll move to make that a, a amendment, please, on item C.
We have a motion. And it has been seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, we have two noes. I mean, I do find it odd that it says the purpose of an interconnected street is intended to, and then it goes on to describe an interconnected street, which is just encouraging certain behaviors. Whatever, I'm not voting on it. Motion carries. We are on fifteenth, fine, 16?
We do have, uh, some requested changes on 16, four oh one, point, one, point, three, point, three. Uh, first item that we request is item C, uh, which talks about the right of way dedication and street connection to existing right of way stubs. And we add it in there unless topography, wetlands, streams, natural features, or other conditions exist to make connection impractical, because that's not taken into account, it just sort of says you need to connect, and if you have to go through a wetland, we don't think that, for instance, that would be, uh, right. On item F, we ask that, uh, the language should also be amended that says the jurisdictional fire chief or designate must review any exceptions to the requirements in sections E and F, which we're talking about. Uh, when sprinkling is required for buildings and the second entrance as it relates to square footages, it just sort of quant, uh, clarifies that. And then the last thing that we see, if you will notice here, attached at the back is an example. So we deleted a lot of section out as it related to the second entrance. Uh, whoever wrote the, uh, second entrance, which is the staff version of F, either had, had one too many geometry classes or never took geometry. Uh, if you look at the example that we've given you, and this is a real world example, we have a development that was approved in the county, and it shows that the distance between the driveways is 470 feet. With this example, if we go by this particular code, it's written in the fire code, the distance required between the driveways is 1,400 feet, but we don't even have 1,400 feet. It's not a realistic, it's not a reasonable expectation as it relates to how this formula was written. So we have quantified that, simply say that the fire chief still has the approval process. It is still his determining, uh, ability to make the decision. But it shouldn't be based on some wild geometry formula that doesn't even li- list in the real world. So therefore, we have made these changes to section 16 as it relates to the requirements for the second entrance. And again, it does not undercut the fire marshal's authority at all. It just simply means that he needs to look at it on a case by case basis versus some wild geometry, uh, formula.
Mr. Chairman, in my copy on, uh, four oh one point, one point, three point three, it says right away dedication, this is item C, should be considered. I mean, that seems like it would consider where you have wetlands or some other requirement, so again, I don't know that it really was, was, is the way it was described, that it was mandating it. The other section that's being described, again, if it's something involving the fire marshal, we got the fire marshal and everyone's approval before this meeting, or, or their review, and what I must suggest is everything you do this month, we will absolutely consolidate it all and come back next month and bring it to you again. Because I think we're going to have to go over it more than once, but I think today is a great time to go through it all the first time. Thank you.
Just close your question.
Yeah, Mr. Lehman and then.
Yeah, Dan, if I can just ask a question, because I know the fire marshal made some comments related to the, the, you know, he objected to some, to a couple of the items, he actually said he was fine with some and objected to some, but I, I don't, I don't see him, uh, a- and you mentioned, I'm assuming as part of the process, that the, that the, the jurisdictional fire chief, fire marshal was part of the process, that, but, but I don't see anywhere that he made comment to four oh one point, one point, three point three, and I guess I'm just asking, do, do I, do I read that right? I mean, did he, did he make a comment to that?
He may be here, I'm not.
Oh, no, no, I do, I see, on the back, he actually agreed. I'm sorry, I was looking at the front page, but he, he did, it looks like he, can you, can you verify that for me? Um, he had sent an email, it was part of this email, just, I'm.
He was invited to the meeting, or is there someone from the fire office here, can you ask?
Is there anybody from the City Fire Department here?
Apparently not.
Okay, I, I just have a document where, where he says okay to that, I guess that change, I just.
Let's assume, but, but I'm not. Let's assume that that's okay, and if it's not, we will find out next month.
Well, I, I don't want to put, I don't, it's just a document that I read earlier today that, that, or yesterday, or more last week that, okay, thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Bird, is it required that these subdivision regulations conform exactly to what the fire chief is asking? Or by raising the bar for the subdivision regulations, do we simply remove a barrier, keep people from having to come before this body for variance requests? They will still have to comply with everything the fire chief is asking for?
Yes, we can't circumvent the fire code.
Mr. Lehman?
Yeah, I, I would, and this is just a opinion, obviously being a, uh, commissioner on the board. I would only say, I think it's, I think it's important to at least try to be consistent with approved codes and requirements. Understanding, and I, and I agree, to that point, it may actually end up more so with some of these other items that, um, uh, that, that there is strong objection, that, that you maybe leave it in a variance type of process potentially, um, that would my, I guess my only caution to that is it's, it's difficult from a regulation standpoint, when you have one document that says one thing and, and a, and a different code saying another thing, but, but Dan answered the, the, inappropriately, the, the jurisdictional fire chief does have a lot of, a lot of jurisdictional authority, uh, more so than the subdivision regs, thanks.
Is it possible that what you gave us is mislabeled in terms of staff and APV? Can you look at it? Are you looking at what you gave us?
I am. So what are you, uh, referencing that you think might be?
Well, the, the staff version has all the language struck through.
I just took exactly what was, what was submitted from staff with all of their edits. That's why I took all of those strikes out to make it easier to read on our version. I just left theirs as is.
Gotcha, okay.
So the changes, thank you, Mr. Chair, changes in item C and item F?
Would be, uh, uh, section, subsection C, subsection D, which adds the word should consider providing, uh, section F, and then we deleted some of the sections as it related on the second page.
Let's take these one at a time, if I could. All right, so, uh, four oh one point, one point, three point three, item C. There's, uh, it looks like the added language, if I'm reading this correctly, of unless to- topography, wetland, streams, natural features, or conditions exist to make the connection impractical. Is there any discussion on that? Mr. Law?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I think I'd just like to say that, um, for, for myself, it, it appears that the way that it's written is that it should be considered and not that it shall be provided. And, and I think that language is, is sufficient.
Uh, the staff version?
Yes.
Will you make a motion to that end?
Uh, I, I would make a motion that it remains as, as it is in staff version.
Second, so we have a motion and second to, uh, reject the version that's been put in front of us here and to stick with the staff version. Any discussion?
This is just for section C?
Just for section C. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and then on, um.
D.
D. Mr. Price, it looks like the change is what exactly?
So in the second sentence after the word facilities added, should consider providing a pay versus, uh, indicating that, um.
A paved pedestrian access.
Should consider providing.
Subject to agreement with facility owner from the development to the public facility. An easement shall not be listed. So you're wanting to change? Should to shall?
Because, again, it's, it's.
Or should to should, I guess.
Right.
Move to approve the amendment.
We have a motion to approve the amendment, and it has been properly seconded in discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good one, no, Mr. Law, motion carries.
And the next goes to item F. First sentence stays exactly the same, uh, the, then we strike the rest of the diagram and, uh, simply add the verbiage that jurisdictional fire chief or designate must review any exception to requirements in sections E and F, which are noted above, or is this section in order to ensure compliance with the international fire code?
Mr. Maybe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think it is the, the intent of this one, as long as, for me, as long as it's still being reviewed by the jurid- jurid- jurisdictional, excuse me, fire chief, I'm, I'm comfortable with that amendment and, uh, would have moved to approve as.
I we have a motion, it has been seconded, I have concerns with it, because, I mean, at the end of the day, we're going to get a preliminary plat, and staff's going to have a preliminary plat, they're going to need some rule to review it by, or are they just subrogating that responsibility to the fire chief? Or the, the fire marshal's office, is that what would happen in this case? I mean, I guess.
That, ba- basically, that's what's happening now.
Yeah, that's what happens now.
Yeah, that's what happens now.
So I don't know that that changes the process.
Yeah.
They should definitely go to the fire marshal first before coming in with preliminary plat. That would always be my recommendation. If you come. So I mean, yes.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Then after that, we deleted section G in the staff, because that had to do with what we just covered in F. And then their H became our G, their I became our H, and that language stayed the same.
Make a motion to make the amendments as presented.
We have a motion and it has been seconded. Any discussion?
So in our packet, thank you, Mr. Chairman, in our packet, G is still in here and has no indication of an edit.
It should have had the letter G and the letter H should have been highlighted in blue. But the language stayed the same as far as out of the staffs.
Okay, so for sake of clarity of the motion, G is to be removed.
In the staff version.
In the staff version?
Yes.
And I don't want to miss in this. Are you good? I don't want the words in the motion out. Okay, want to make sure that we have that clear on record. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Seventeen, good.
Good.
Eighteen.
Good.
Eighteen's what?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
So we're on four oh one point one point three point five. Go ahead.
Ian Blackmore, Bratton Associates. Regarding block length, four oh one point one point three point five B. We would request that the length of dead end streets not to exceed twelve hundred linear feet in substitution for staff seven hundred and fifty. If you review item A, they're recommending a block length not to exceed twelve hundred. Therefore, if a block length could be twelve hundred before having an intersection or a turnaround, it seems as though the dead end length should match that at twelve hundred feet.
Any comments or questions from the planning commission? We have a motion to approve an amendment changing it to block length to twelve hundred feet. So this is just four oh one point one point three point five on A. I'm sorry. A and B. Just B, sorry. Any discussion? Mr. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan, the way that staff has recommended the seven hundred and fifty feet, is that following a standard or was that part of the?
Is there anyone here from city public works and engineering?
Chris, that's the, for the dead end street, seven hundred and fifty foot length, that's coming from the international fire code, adopted international fire code.
He said it was from the international fire code. I believe that was correct.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Mr. Law?
To some extent, yes. I guess what I'm wondering is, would we be voting on something that would be in opposition to the international fire code?
Mr. Price.
If there's something incongruent with the fire next month, we will bring back any changes that if there's anything that needs to be corrected, we will bring back next month.
I think they've already said it came from the fire code. The twelve hundred feet, the twelve hundred feet.
I think my question was about the seven hundred and fifty feet.
Where did that come from?
From the dead end street section and Chris, do you have that? Or Erica or anyone else who wants to answer?
I believe that that would just be for connectivity.
Okay.
Yeah, if I'm just, I've been referencing an email that had some comments that was sent by RPA. And I would only say that the one, the one we voted on to remove all of the calculations and just put it in the purview of the jurisdictional fire chief. The email I had, at least from the city, they were, they were in agreement with that. They are not in agreement based on the email about, about changing the seven hundred and fifty dead end to twelve hundred. But that, so I may oppose it only because I think it's in, I think it's contrary to the fire marshal. I do not know if it's, if it's per se exactly what's referenced in the, in the, in the international fire code.
Mr. Fisher.
Mr. Chairman, from A, in reference to Dan's comment about you're not agreeing congruent with any other codes, you can come back and change it. That is absolutely true. The other thing is absolutely true is that this is congruent primarily, most everything that I think that we put in here. Mr. Lemon can attest to this is congruent with county code. And we also have the ability, we recognize it, we understand it, and we will be prepared to do it is to approach the city council for amendments and any admissions that we need to or edits in IFC, which is allowed by law for each individual community.
Thank you for that. And yes, we will do the same thing. We will take it before city council. We had a briefing to them last week. So whatever y'all do today, we will brief them again.
Thank you. All right, so we've got a motion and it has been properly seconded on the change. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. There was a no from Mr. Lemon and Mr. Law. And then on, also on eighteen, you're looking to strike E, is that, or C, is that correct? What's the reason for that? Hell, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Set on eighteen. All right, you wanted to address twenty one?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Price.
So the only thing that we have added here is just a statement that says the city's jurisdictional engineer or designate may approve this as less than those provided because we recognize oftentimes where a development comes out onto a side street or onto a street, that there may be an existing street located less than these distances and it's of no ability of us to change or work within other distances. So it just simply sets it up where, again, this does not take away from anyone's ability at the city level or staff level to disapprove. But what it does, it just simply point out that the city does have the ability to go with less distances than those that are provided on this graph.
What's well, the commission?
Since this item appears on section four oh one point one point four point two and point three, I'd like to move that we add it to both.
Do we have a motion and it has been seconded? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Twenty five, four oh one point one point five point one.
So the request here, which is dealing with minimum street widths. The one change, which was just earlier voted upon, which deals with the length and whether or not a turnaround is required. We would put zero to a hundred and fifty feet that instead it would be no. But a small cul-de-sac is allowed, so it's not required, but a small cul-de-sac could be constructed. And that is in keeping with what the commission passed earlier. And then the second change in the graph deals with five hundred and one to twelve hundred feet is the length where turnarounds are required versus the five oh one to seven fifty. As commission has just previously passed a few minutes ago, allowing us to go to twelve hundred. And if for some reason you were wanting to go over twelve hundred, special approvals required. So this is just in keeping with what recently was passed, keeping the language congruent.
Any discussion? Mr. Maybe, thank you. We have a motion and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's an additional edit under four oh one point one point five point one. Are we voting on that as well? It's under the kind of miscellaneous notes at the bottom.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, sorry, Ms. App. We did add a language that says other non-international fire code variances to this section can only be approved by the planning commission. So in other words, it just simply states that anything going to the fire marshal must be approved by the fire marshal. Anything outside of that would come before this body.
All right, we have an amended motion that has been seconded. So let me understand that exactly. So there would be two types of variance. There would be a variance that would go before in regards to this section?
Anything having to do with the fire marshal is handled administratively.
It would only go to the fire marshal. It would not go through planning commission.
If it has to do anything with the fire code, it's fire marshal only. The county, the planning commission does not have the authority to grant variances related to the fire code.
True. But the fire marshal doesn't have currently the capacity to grant variances to our subdivision regulations, and this would be in essence doing that.
I think what we're trying
Because what you're saying is if it's given approval by the fire chief or designate, then it doesn't, it doesn't even come back to this body for the variance.
I think we're saying the same thing is that basically anything having to do in the fire realm deals with the fire marshal. Anything dealing with subdivision regs comes to the planning commission.
And keep in mind that the city engineer can still make decisions based on his authority under first health, safety, and welfare. And so again, I mean, some of these things could be creating an incongruency with city code. And again, we're just going to have to review it over the next month and bring it back if there's any problem.
Mr. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, the way that it's written in the staff version is simply variances to this section can only be granted by the planning commission with prior approval by the city. It's pretty straightforward. The adding the other, adding other non-IFC becomes, I think, more specific than is than is necessary. And, you know, in that contract language, I think it's easiest just to be real clear and not add extra things in there. I would, I mean, I know that we have a motion on the floor. But, but, you know, I think amending to match what we've already amended makes total sense. It seems that adding the other non-IFC version of that just becomes cumbersome language.
Mr. Maybe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Law, I think, has a good point. I'm willing to amend. I would amend my motion to not include the other non-IFC addition to that. But the other items in this section, I do want to remain as part of my motion.
We have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Lehman was opposed. Twenty six.
Twenty six, section four oh one point one point five point two. Item B, we would like to add the word, instead of saying all turnarounds designs must allow vehicles, we want to say all turnarounds are typically only allowed where topography or unique natural features make a cul-de-sac impractical or a stubbed out street demonstrate potential connectivity across parcels or phases. So there is the other having to do with the IFC variances, but I would assume, given that the last section considered, you struck out the other non-IFC variances, that would not be accepted. But we would just ask that alternate turnarounds, typically alternate turnarounds are going to match what is in the international fire code as far as those allowed type of turnaround accesses. So this is just simply keeping in congruent with the international fire code that there are alternates besides cul-de-sacs that one can do.
Move to approve.
When you're making a motion to approve, are you just making a motion to approve on B or the other change that we last discussed?
Just B.
Okay.
That's my second.
Four oh one point one point five point two. We have a motion to approve the amended language. It has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then what's the will of the commission in regards to this request that we add other non-IFC variances to this section can only be granted by planning commission? But do we want to take any action on that separately?
I don't.
Anything? All right, thank you. All right.
Chairman?
Yeah.
On twenty six, which is four oh one point one point five point two. Are we also removing something? Because you have A, B, and C. Now that the bottom, I see A and B, chairman.
I'm sorry. Yep, thank you.
Something's happening there. Chairman, since we previously changed something that would have impacted a hundred and fifty feet or less, I move that we remove section B from the staff section.
All right, we have a motion to approve section B from the staff section. It has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
And I believe we have one of the, maybe I'll get into it next, but under the applicant's version, the very last section in blue, other non-IFC variances.
We're not taking any action on that. So this staff version. Twenty eight.
Section four oh one point one point five point four. This is directly related to some of the previous sections and the street lengths. I can read it, but it's recommending twelve hundred foot maximum on all dead end streets and connected street segments.
In regards to four oh one point one point five point four, what's the will of the commission?
I'll second that and noting that we will have review by the IFC or fire marshal before this comes back to us.
We have a motion and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Law.
Yeah, I think to the point that if the IFC maximum is twelve hundred, then I would think that should should be changed to shall. But I think we can roll with it. You won't be able to exceed it. So I don't know why we would write the word should.
Well, because the IFC can change. So yeah, every couple of years, I guess. Any more discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Law, Mr. Lehman. No on that. Twenty eight. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, twenty eight. We're on twenty nine. Yep.
Section twenty nine, four oh one point one point six point one. The change here is staff had a maximum street grade of ten percent. We'd like to propose fifteen percent, but also put a maximum continuous length on that at seven hundred and fifty feet. We've done some research on some other jurisdictions on what their max slope is. Johnson City is fifteen, Gatlinburg is fifteen, San Francisco is fourteen. They also have up to seventeen percent with approval from the fire department. Also allows greater than seventy percent as an exception under unusual circumstances. Seattle is seventeen and Portland is eighteen. They actually go up to twenty two percent if it's granted special approval by the fire chief. Clarksville's twelve, but considers a max up to fifteen. We've had conversations with the fire marshal on this and We've had conversations with the fire marshal on this and he's never disapproved 15%. We feel like we're given some control on the length by not making it to infinity as long as you want. The, the things that make this good is we're dealing with slopes. It allows us to change grade very quickly, minimize grading and disturbance of area. There's cost implications to the development if we have to go flatter and then go up. If needed, I think Mike is willing to provide a kind of a visual of what 15% looks like.
Mr. Chairman, I did talk to the fire marshal about this one in particular, and it's true. He prefers to keep it on a discretionary basis and actually supported the 10% that's in here, but he has the discretion to go up to 15%.
The other thing I failed to mention was that the county, Hamilton County is actually at 15%.
Can you show us 750 feet of 15% slope?
It'd take a lot of streams.
What's the will of the commission? We have a motion and it has been seconded to approve the change. Any discussion? And that's just in regards to the slopes and the max contiguous length of slope.
I think the last part where it's in-
Hold on one second. Any, any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then Ms. Shepherd, you were saying?
The last section is, I think, the same language that was in Mike's previous discussion.
We haven't adopted that language on any of the other ones. Do we need to do anything different here? No.
I just wanted to point that out. That's why that's blue on there.
Twenty-nine, we're done with. Thirty?
Next one is thirty. This one falls in line with the previous one that was approved. We've just changed it to 15% for the max slope as opposed to the 10.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thirty-one. Are you making a change? Are you suggesting a change on thirty-one?
Yes, sir. There's one slight change.
Yeah.
So what we are asking for deals with a stop condition. So without getting too far into the weeds here, we have what are called K-values when you are determining what a vertical curve, what the distance is to make in terms of your tangent section approaching and what the curvature lengths are to provide proper site distances. However, when you have a stop condition, those K-values that are referenced in here do not take that into account. Previously, when John Van Linkel was the traffic engineer for the city of Chattanooga, he and I worked together and came up with a K-value of seven for a stop condition. And he wrote a letter to that effect some 15, 16 years ago. I did provide a copy of the staff that has that when we were going through the discussions. So again, our only ask here is that the K-value requirements not be as stringent as they are in a straight section where you don't have a stop condition occurring. And so that would be to reduce the K-value to seven, which worked for a number of years and a number of different amendments. I never had one issue, to my knowledge, in any of those subdivisions we did.
How often does this come up?
It comes up probably on average, maybe once every three subdivisions in one condition. So it comes up fairly regularly, but again, most people never see it as it relates to previous reviews because that K-values really were not looked at that stringently. But if we're going to be looking at those moving forward, then it does become an important item.
What's the will of the commission?
I will get that.
We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. This deals with cross slopes or turnarounds. So this is section 401.1.6.4. The only ask is to go from four to five percent. Five percent we pick because that is ADA standards. So if ADA is sufficient for a wheelchair, we think it ought to be sufficient for a max grade in a cul-de-sac.
What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve five percent. Right. And it has been seconded. I'm not going to pass these down unless you all want to see something. We've already taken action. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thirty-six. Is it thirty-five?
Can we talk about thirty-five?
It just depends on how you- Yeah, thirty-five. Go ahead, Mr. Chambers.
Sure. Here, we're talking about amending the language for the broken back curve. And this is just, just due to, you know, these are the subdivision regulations and we're dealing with subdivisions in lots and how big they are and what we're trying to fit in here. And so we're recommending going from 100 feet to 50 feet just because that tends to fit a subdivision lot pattern better than 100 feet.
It seems like a really big change to me. What, I mean, Mr. Burr, what do you think? I'm just curious. What do you think of that? I mean, it's 100% reduction, right? Is that 100% or 50% reduction? Who's the, who's doing the math? I mean, when you're going from 100 to 50, that's not going from 4% to 5%. That's half. So I'm just curious.
While it is a change from what's recommended by staff, it's an infinite increase from what it is today. There's no provision at the moment. There's lots of examples of broken back curves, you know, being just tangent and continuing the street pattern right now. I'm not sure where the 100-foot tangent section came from. But what that, that means is, is now you're, you're losing a lot of land that doesn't really benefit anybody, which ultimately drives up the housing costs. If we're adding a tangent section in between two curves that doesn't really fit a normal pattern, then you have to fit in spare sections of property that doesn't really go to use.
In my, my personal experience to answer your question is exactly what they're describing. It, 100 feet makes the lots awkwardly long, longer than are required under zoning or any other regulations. From a traffic standpoint, depends on what speed you're going, but if you're going 25 miles per hour, like you should be in a subdivision, I don't think there would be a problem.
What's the will of the commission? Second. Motion to approve the amendment has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Highlander?
Yes, sir. We have quite a few people here who have taken off work today. They have meters feet and children to pick up. Is there any way that we could interject a change to help them?
I think we're almost done.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Next change requesting is thirty-seven, 401.1.6.9 is the staff number that it has. And basically this is re-amending what we just stated with a K-value of seven for stop conditions. So it's just, again, a repeat of what had previously been approved.
We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Price?
Next to last one is section 38, 401.1.7.1. We're asking changes to sub item A. Currently it reads sidewalks shall be required on both sides of all new streets, public or private, excluding alleyways and service drives. The request is it shall state sidewalks shall generally be required on both sides of all new public streets, excluding private streets, alleyways, and service drives. It's simply to give flexibility as it relates to the development. We recognize typically that both sides of the street make sense, but there are times when you could put a multimodal path on one side and not on the other, and you really don't need sidewalks on both sides. It just simply takes the word shall and replaces it with generally shall be required or generally required.
What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve. It hasn't been seconded. I was looking for a second. Is there one? All right.
I'll second, I'll second it to get it on the floor for conversation.
All right, we have a motion to second.
Okay. So my question is, does this legally have any teeth?
It just simply, when you have the word shall, it creates a variant situation. What this simply does is state that let us have the flexibility as designers to make the best determination as it relates to what is proposed. Staff can still come back, for instance, in a situation and say, we want it on both sides of the street. Then let two sides make their dissertation as far as why they think theirs is right. And then the commission gets to vote on which way to go.
They can still require it then?
They can still require it.
Okay, I'll let my motion stand a second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Mr. Lyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Price, the edit also edits out the requirement for both public and private and then goes on to exclude private streets. Can you, can you speak about the, that, that set of changes?
Yes. When it's a private street, then I think that should be in the realm of the private developer to make that determination. If it's going to be maintained, owned, and operated by the HOA and/or the developer, then they need to be the ones to make the determination whether or not they want to put sidewalks on both sides of the street or an alleyway.
Would those changes or would that HOA then be taking care of that public infrastructure in perpetu-, or private infrastructure, I should say, in perpetuity?
They could.
I think then at what point then once, if that becomes part of the, the public realm and the taxpayers burdened bear, then, then what happens in that situation?
Well, in that situation, it would have to go through a process where the city would have to accept it. And that means that it's going to have to meet certain standards and requirements. And if it doesn't, then the city would not accept it. So just because an HOA no longer wants to maintain something, they can't force the city's hands to take it unless it meets the threshold of what the city would want.
Correct. So then the city would be taking possession of a, of a set of pieces of infrastructure with no sidewalks, correct?
It's only if the city decides to take it. There's no guarantee that the city would take it in that instance. Most times what I have found is that if it doesn't meet the pavement thickness or whatever other requirements, they won't take it. They would simply decline the offer.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just a general comment. It seems to me like this is something that should be handled in the variance process. As a group.
I agree. Do you have a motion? We do have a second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. So in favor of the motion, Mr. Matthews? Bird? Raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. All right. In favor of the motion, please raise your hand.
Yes, we can see it. So we can see who's in favor.
All right. That is not a majority. We need an alternate motion. Because that motion did not carry. Or, or no action.
I would move to leave it as staff has it.
A motion to leave the staff version. Well, we do because it's red and now we've debated it. And all the ones we've debated, we've taken action. So we're taking action. We have a motion. I, I know, but we've gone through this. We have a motion to leave the staff version. Is it seconded? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Ms. Shepherd, what's next?
This next section is section number 50. It is 401.1.9.2. This is the review factors for variances. We feel like that the staff version makes you prove a hardship. It could be site conditions, but we feel like that there are other design considerations that would be warranted in the review factor of a variance. And those are, we're not intending to create a hazard, hazardous or unsafe condition for the project. These variances can help facilitate good design. And so if you see in the blue section, review factors can include site constraints or conditions unique to the site causing hardships, transportation context, place making, value to the community, connectivity, creativity, and new design intent or standards. And then at the end, it says variances granted must demonstrate safe accommodations, which is what the staff had recommended.
I couldn't agree more. Motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Fisher?
I think that's all the changes.
Yes. Yes, with all, with all the amendments that we've taken action on. So we do have a motion to adopt wholesale change with all the amendments. It has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just quickly say thank you to the staff, RP of the RPA, for all their hard work in putting this together. I'd like to thank our professional advisory committee made up of seven different engineers that spent many, many hours on this without pay. And most of all, thank the commission for considering this.
Thank you. All right. First item under old business. We're back to our agenda here. Case 2023-0110. Located at 8209 Bell Mill Road. It's an application to rezone from A1 to R1. Staff is recommended to deny. Is there any opposition present? Oh, you're in opposition.
Mr. Chairman, you did, we did receive email in opposition, which is included in the spreadsheet that everybody has in front of them today.
Okay. So just to remind everybody, the order of the agenda, we'll first hear the staff presentation, then we'll hear from the applicant and then we'll hear from the opposition.
Okay. I'll try to go quick through these.
Thank you.
This is 2023-110, a request to rezone from A1 Agriculture District to R1 for single- This is twenty twenty-three one ten, a request to rezone from A one Agriculture District to R one for single unit subdivision. Number of acres of this site's a hundred and two acres. As part of our site plan policy, no site plan is required to be submitted, so no site plan was submitted. So we don't know the number of units proposed or the density number. There's been no zoning history on this particular piece of property. We have had some adjacent zoning history, really across Snow Hill Road to the east of this site from A one to R one back in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-two. Just to the south of this site, you can see on the screen, in twenty twenty-three, in front of this body, as well as the county commission, we're two requests for special permits for wedding venues. We have a condition on those, no more than three hundred cars or persons at one, any one time. Again, that's across on this property. This property is eighty-two oh nine Bell Mill Road. It's about eight hundred and fifty feet, eight hundred and fifteen feet to the west of Snow Hill. It's a vacant piece of property. To the north is agricultural and single unit residential uses. To the east, across Snow Hill Road, is a single unit residential under construction, which is the first plat that we heard this day. To the south is agricultural, and again, the special event venue for weddings. A portion of this property is in the flood plain and floodways, you can see on the screen. Here's a view of the site from Bell Mill. Let's go through this pretty quickly. Another view of the site. This is Bell Mill Road. This is south of the site. East of the site, and this property is in the Wolftever Creek area plan, which is adopted in two thousand and seven. The plan recommendation was low intensity residential, which is primarily single unit residential, the density of three dwellings per acre or less. Here's a closer view of that land use plan recommendation. You see Bell Mill in the area circled in red. This was a site plan, if you will, provided by the applicant on eight eleven, which is Friday, just showing area set aside to the south here, and a flood, not a flood, but a power line easement bisecting the property. Staff recommended to deny this request. The proposal is not in compliance with the Wolftever Creek area plan, astronomy, land uses, and development form. The R one allows a density of up to seven dwellings per acre. Again, the land use plan recommended a max of three. The R one to introduce a higher density development with smaller lots at this location. Again, the current A one zoning of the property more closely aligns with the plan recommendation of three dwellings per acre than requested R one. The area is currently undergoing area planning study, which will provide guidance on appropriate development form and densities in the future in this location because the Wolftever Creek Plan, again, is adopted in two thousand and seven. If there is desire to have flexibility in design in terms of lot furnages, lot sizes, and setbacks, special exceptions put in the A one zone will be the route to go, and that tool would provide flexibility. So based on those not complying with the land use plan, introducing a different form, smaller lots, and density of this location, staff recommended to deny this request.
Question for staff. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Commissioner Heiliger?
A question for staff, sir. Have there been any other applications for rezoning on Bell Mill? Brian?
Our deadline's coming up, yes. There was an application submitted. It is, I guess it's matter of record since it was submitted. We do have another application to rezone. We've not even looked at that yet.
You don't know how much acreage on that one?
I don't recall. I believe it was, I'm just going off the top of my head, a hundred acres, I believe, saying.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, Mr. Price?
Thank you. Mike Price, M.A.P. Engineers. I have passed out a drawing there that indicates the proposed amenities areas as it relates to this hundred and two acres. What we are showing at this point is dedication of eight point nine acres that could be utilized as a park. If you remember the case that came before commission here within the last year, year and a half on Bill Jones Road, did something very similar in nature, and we think that that would be appropriate here as well. So we did have a neighborhood meeting. I would say it was short of a bloodbath. It was a pretty lively discussion at the end of the day, and of course, the main issue and topic, and I'm sure that opposition will get into this, is dealing with traffic. So let me just state that we will be widening Bell Mill Road in front of our development to twenty-two feet, beginning at the intersection with Mountain Pass Drive and continuing on to the second entrance. That would be located somewhere off of Bell Mill Road. With that, I would like to reserve all of my time for the remainder of my rebuttal, and then turn it over to opposition at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Gary Bowles. I live at fifty-eight twelve Mountain Pass Drive in Oodawal. My property is adjacent to the Bell Mill Road property in question. First, I'd like to thank Dan Reuter, Brian Schultz, and the rest of the RPA staff for their review and prudent recommendation of denial of this rezoning based on the guidance and regulations. It's obvious to me that this development, even if well-intended to provide housing for a growing county, is one not beneficial for the general welfare of the public living in the area and creates safety issues for Hunter Road due to increased traffic from this proposed development and other developments already planned or underway. Today, you'll hear from me and several other concerned citizens who oppose this arbitrary rezoning. Others are here and will not be permitted to speak due to the commission's time constraints, but I can assure you that we are, I can assure you that we are united in opposition. My focus today will be on our most important issue, and that's the safety of the citizens in the immediate vicinity of the rezoning and our neighbors along shoulderless, curvy, accident-riddled Hunter Road in Oodawal. Recent descriptions of Hunter Road are, a local traffic expert has said it, quote, "has more curds than a bucket of fish hooks." Mayor Womp stated on August second that it was, quote, "designed for wagons." Every day, thousands of people commute to and from school, work, and run errands on Hunter Road. Many take their boats and RVs to and from places like Harrison Bay State Park. Hunter Road's the main thoroughfare from I seventy-five to the highway fifty-eight area. Frequent accidents on I seventy-five sometimes divert traffic to Hunter Road. The addition of this almost three hundred home development, along with the large apartment complex already approved on the south end of Hunter Road, will add to the traffic nightmare on treacherous Hunter Road. Based on reports from the nine one one center from twenty nineteen to August tenth, twenty twenty-three, the Hunter wagon road had almost three thousand two hundred and sixty-one nine one one calls requiring some sort of response, and many, if not most, of those were by multiple vehicles and agencies such as law enforcement and fire. Of those, four hundred and eighty-nine were for traffic accidents alone, and that doesn't count the ones that are unreported. Our state representative Greg Vidal recently said, quote, "Unprecedented development seems to be inevitable everywhere in Hamilton County, but I believe we all can agree that the growth in Oodawal is out of control." Note that Governor Bill Lee spoke in Epperson recently and stated, quote, "Make sure growth does not outpace road quality," unquote. Certainly, this development outpaces road quality and safety. Maybe you should listen to our thoughtful governor and state representative, and you'll now hear from some other citizens.
Good afternoon. My name is John Probst, the fifty-nine ten Mountain Pass Drive. I'm actually up here to talk about Bell Mill Road itself and the fact that it's not capable of managing the high, the traffic that will come from either a medium or high-density neighborhood. But I will advise, since I don't have the time to talk, that before you would make any decision other than denial, that you do perform an unbiased traffic study of Bell Mill Road, and you will see that it has a lot more hazards than I have time to discuss. First of all, slide number one, I want to, that was taken from the intersection of Mountain Pass Drive and Bell Mill Road. The reason why that photograph is taken because thirty-eight of the forty-three homes that exist consist, or consist of, are in the Mountain Pass development, which means this is probably the busiest intersection on that road. The road you see ahead of you is actually part of the developer's responsibility, and I think you heard them say they're going to expand it to twenty-two feet. What you cannot see there is the hazards that are around it. The fact that there's a nine-to-twelve-foot ravine on the right side, and there's a deep, actually a three-foot ditch on the left side, which probably they could pipe out that one. But if they make this twenty-two feet, there's actually no way they can put a shoulder or a turnoff on it or a pullover. Also, what you don't see, there's a blind curve at the top of that hill, and then when you get around the, before you get to that, it's a downhill drive. So let me describe exactly what a person leaving this development would see. They would leave the development, take a right on the Bell Mill Road, they would go down about a little bit more than a tenth of a mile downhill. They would come to a blind curve. At that point, they would have less than fifty yards to distinguish if cars are pulling in and out of Mountain Pass Drive. As they approach Mountain Pass Drive, that's where the developer said he ends his twenty-two-foot change. At that point, the road will be reduced to about eighteen to twenty feet. So with all the dynamics that are happening there, that is definitely ingredients for some public safety issues.
Sir, can I interrupt real quick? First of all, there's only four minutes remaining. Second, I'm curious what the speed limit is on that road.
Speed, well, the speed limit sign is twenty-five, but if the sign fell over, and people, actually, I'm glad you brought it up because coming down that hill, they go at least forty or fifty. I walk that road all the time.
Thank you.
So.
There's two other people that want to speak behind you.
Well, let me just get to the other one. Go to slide three.
Four minutes remaining.
This intersection between Bell Mill and Hunter Road is horrible. I don't have time to go through it, but you see a bus trying to pull there. Buses cannot pull in it. That pickup truck, if he tries to pull out, he's going to have to time it. That's the part of that Hunter Road is straight, and the traffic goes very fast there, so you've got to floor it and turn a hundred and twenty-five degrees to get out. If you come out and take a look at that intersection, you will probably, probably from that fact alone, you're going to deny this request. So I'm going to turn it over to other people since I ran out of time, but please take my recommendation on doing a traffic study. Thank you.
Ma'am, there's only four minutes remaining.
Okay. My name is Dr. Amanda Harden. I'm a national certified school psychologist. I live at fifty-eight oh six Mountain Pass Drive and professor at U T C in the School Psychology Program. I'm here to address the impact this will have on the infrastructure of our education in that area. We are already overflowing with extra students, and we've already had so many proposed new additional home buildings. Currently for Hunter Middle School, where my son is a student, we went from last year at seven forty to this year, we're at eight hundred and twenty in just one school year, and that was due when I asked him about it, due to increased number of students. As the classes keep getting bigger, most of that increase is with the sixth grade growing, and that they're only get bigger after they come. So we're already going to have a natural progression anyways, and based on making the proposed change to R one, even if they did, went up to just three hundred homes instead of the two hundred, which A one allows, that would be based on the census data of sixty-five percent of homes having been run by families with the average of two children. We're looking at an additional three hundred and eighty-five students just with that. And with research from the Elementary School Journal shows that increased class size decreases achievement. As small as a jump from nineteen to twenty-five students per class size over a two-year period makes significant drops in achievement levels. Also, the impacts it will have on the school bus systems, as mentioned, my son, he's in a wheelchair, so he even has a shortened bus. The bus driver on first day last week, she doesn't even know about this all going on with the rezoning. She doesn't live there, but she made a comment because they can't accelerate as fast because the wheelchairs are anchored. She said that she had to wait exponential amount of time to make that turn because it's at a forty-five-degree angle, and it's not safe for turning in, and had to wait on other cars to have already moved out before she could even turn.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tennessee Code thirteen three dash three oh four says that the county legislature adopts a regional plan by resolution. Any land use decisions thereafter made by the legislative body, planning commission, and borders on any appeals must be consistent with the general region plan. The general region plan comprehensive plan twenty thirty was passed in two thousand and six, adopted by the county commission then. The Wolftever plan was adopted in two thousand and seven. The plans are supposed to be used in conjunction with each other, and both plans fall under the Tennessee Code requirement to be consistent. Almost half of the Bell Mill Road properties in the floodway and flood plain, the Wolftever plan specifically mentions Wolftever Creek in the flood plain. It says, "Since the upper Wolftever Creek flows through a large portion of this node, special care should be taken not to disturb the natural stream, flood bank, and course of the waterway." The comprehensive plan says, "Filling and altering the flood plain causes displacement of large volumes of water into areas outside the hundred-year flood plain, which results in flooding." A development model says all development should avoid filling a building within the hundred-year flood plain. One acre
Ma'am.
of land, one foot deep.
We're out of time. Can you wrap up?
Can I finish my statement?
Please.
One acre.
How long is finishing your statement? Okay.
One acre of land, one foot deep, holds three hundred and twenty-six thousand gallons of water. The Bell Mill Road property, hundred-year flood plain, ranges in elevation from seven hundred and eight to seven hundred and fifteen feet. Seven hundred and fifteen point two feet is the FEMA flood designation. For just one acre of flood plain, seven feet, that would be two million two hundred and eighty-two thousand gallons of floodwater displaced to Wolftever Creek and other property. The East Tennessee Natural Gas Company and Savannah Valley Utility Spring District are right downstream, and both of those are very close to the hundred-year and five-hundred-year flood plain now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, considering we sit for an hour and a half listening to the subdivision regulations, I'd like to ask for one more minute to conclude our remarks.
Sure, you can have one more minute.
Thank you. The developer will tell you that he will be within the Wolftever plan of less than three homes per acre if zoned R one. Under current regulations, that's true, but here's the rest of the story for you to consider. The hundred-and-two-acre property has about forty-eight acres in the flood zone. There's about nineteen acres that's occupied by the TBA transmission line in there. So therefore, the buildable land is less than forty acres on this sinkhole-ridden pasture and home to much wildlife. If two hundred and ninety-two houses are built as the developer states, that's a density of seven point three houses per acre on the usable land, which is barely below the limit of seven point six two houses per acre under normal R one restrictions, but well over double the Wolftever plan. Therefore, in my opinion, the guidance which allows one to use the total land to determine the ratio of houses to acreage is not in the spirit of the plan, which was intended to allow for things like small flood ponds. Will this rezoning and prospective development primarily benefit the public or primarily benefit the developer, who incidentally has not closed on the sale? Now it appears that the RPA has another rezoning from A one to R one of property adjacent to this nightmare, which will further exasperate the issues already brought forth on Hunter Road, Bell Mill Road, schools, and flood zone issues. When will it stop? The time is now. How should they vote?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, no. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Price. Commissioner Heiliger. Sure. Did you want to give a statement? Did you want to give a statement? Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, Chair. Jeff Everso, County Commissioner, District Ten. I think for a while, when I ran for this position last year, one of the number-one concerns from our community is, is infrastructure is not keeping up with growth. And I think, not to throw anything on past administrations, because we did what we did when we had to do what we had to do. We had jobs coming in, and we had to create homes for those jobs that were coming in Hamilton County. Now, we're in a situation where we do need homes, but we do need to do it in the right way. Mr. Carr, you and I personally, and with other people on this commission, we've sat and had personal conversations. Sometimes maybe we need to slow down in certain areas of our community. I'm a strong advocate. When you look at Hunter Road, you look at Oodawal Georgetown Road, you look at Snow Hill Road, we have saturated those roads so bad with growth and development. We've made ourselves dangerous in those areas. Both the schools, traffic flow, getting from point A to point B is taking, you know, it's becoming Atlanta traffic. And I don't think that our citizens that moved to Oodawal, the citizens that moved to Georgetown, really wanted to move to Atlanta. We do have to create homes, but there's a right way to create homes. There's a right way to do that. Four out of ten homes that we're selling today are sold to internal residents of Hamilton County, four out of ten. Four of those homes, that's our kids and grandkids that are coming of age, and they're buying their first home. They can't do that with a half-million-dollar home. We didn't do that when we started our careers with that type of development. So my challenge is, is let's look at these areas where we've oversaturated. Let's use a little common sense. Let's use the skills that each one of us have to look at the future and say, how can we make a decision today that's going to be sustainable in thirty, forty years from now? That's the key that this development is right now. If you've already got a second zoning request that's already been entered in for that same area that's, you said, about a hundred acres, when's it going to stop? When are we going to make the stand and say, let's slow down? Let's let the RPA continue what they're doing. Let's get the zoning recs looked at. Let's make some changes in that way. But for in the interim, we've got to stand for what's right, and we've got to do things in the right, in the right decisions, in the right direction. So thank you for giving me a few minutes, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Price, you've got plenty of time.
I'll try not to use it all. So we've heard a lot about doing what's right. So let's talk about a few items in through here. So staff made a recommendation to deny because they assume the worst-case scenario. They assume that there'd be over 700 homes. Now, I've read through the staff recommendation, not once, not twice, not three times, not four times, but five times in this document right here. It says 3.0 units per acre is acceptable. Five times. Two other times it references density. Seven times combined, we have committed to 2.9 homes per acre. After that, I can't find anything in this document from staff that would say to deny. So we are meeting the land use plan has adopted for this area. We're at 2.9, 296 homes. So we meet the requirements of the land use plan. Now, there's a lot of discussion as it related to the, the, the site. First of all, it's not 18 acres. It's under the TVA easement. If you look at your drawing, it's eight. If you look at the area where we've taken out in terms of the floodway and the buffer, we've taken that into account, that's nine acres, 9.3. There is sufficient land for us to develop and do it in a responsible way. We've also committed to the fact that we would widen Bell Mill Road. I have a list of conditions here that we would propose as it relates to the zoning conditions. Now typically, a development in the county, what one does is one goes in, develops it, and they're really only responsible to do what's right in front of their development. Bell Mill Road directly in front of us. We are committed to taking care of the intersection at Bell Mill Road and Hunter Road, which is quite the, the issue as it relates to this site specifically. Because if you really get right down to it, there never should have been a development on Bell Mill Road. The subdivision that's there now shouldn't have been built. This road should have been taken care of years ago. We're the ones that simply are, I guess, catching the lightning, if you will, or catching the wrath because of what's being proposed and what people are sort of fed up with, what's been going on in their neighborhood for years. If the county will step up and you get the right of way, we'll fix it. And that's an offer that you don't typically get in the county. And it is the responsibility of the county to fix that. It's not the developer's responsibility. County should have fixed it, should have fixed it years ago. But if the county gets the right of way, we'll do the work. We'll make that intersection as close to a 90 degrees as possible. Now, if you then look at the only other issues that have really, I think, been discussed, there were some about school-aged children. We've done our own calculations here based upon the Department of Education, Tennessee Department of Education, and Hamilton County. What we find is that it will add about 143 school-aged children, that is from first grade to senior. This again doesn't occur overnight. This would occur over a four to five-year period. As it relates to Hunter Road, we can't fix Hunter Road. If there's going to be 202 homes that would be constructed into here under 2.0 units per acre, and we're only asking go to 296, well, at the end of the day, Hunter Road is still going to have its issues. But again, that is a county issue to fix. You can't expect the developer to fix an issue that is well outside of his realm of control. But we have committed to fixing the things that we can. Bell Mill Road, the intersection of Bell Mill and Hunter Road, we've committed to do a 10-foot landscape buffer against the residents beside us. We've got the stream buffers in through here. We're dedicating an area to a park. We meet the 2.9 under 3.0. Matter of fact, if you go through and look at staff recommendation, even says that if you do, maybe do a PUD and maybe have some public space. We don't need to do a PUD, and we're still doing the public space. So every reason that was given by staff to deny, we've answered. We're at 2.9. Can I fix Hunter Road? No. Driven on a road since as long as I can remember, 50-plus years. Yeah, it's a terrible road. Something needs to be done. And when the council that commissioned, I think, is in the process of getting a task force together, I hope they come up with a lot of great solutions. I'm sure that they will. But we're dealing with the issues that we can address. We're stepping up to the plate. We're not turning a blind eye towards this. We're not saying continue to suffer at that intersection the way that you have. Instead, we're saying we'll fix it. You get the right of way because we don't have eminent domain, but if you get the property, we will fix it. Now, that to me is, is stepping up to the plate. That's the responsibility of a developer, and that's doing things in the right way. We're looking at building $400,000 homes plus in this area. And again, if there's 202 homes and all we stay is A1, we, at that point, trying to fix all these other items in through here, we don't have the ability to have the funds to do those sorts of things. But again, we can step up to the plate if you grant us the density, grant us the approval, go on A1 to R1, which has been done to my knowledge every other single time in this area. So an R1 is an appropriate zone with those conditions. And if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Price? Commissioner Highlander.
Have you tried to purchase the right of way on Bell Mill and Hunter?
I've had multiple conversations with the gentleman's, um, I'll just say friend or employee about trying to purchase uh that property. It would be roughly about a tenth of an acre, so a very, very small uh piece of uh land. Uh, and I think basically his premise to say, well, it never really gave me a straight answer back, but I believe if I've sort of read the tea leaves correctly, is that his thought is, is if I don't sell it, they'll deny the request. But it still doesn't change, if we add 200 more homes or 296 more homes, it's still just going to create more of a mess. It's got to be fixed, and we're willing to do that.
So you would not be able to change the 18 to 20-foot road from the Hunter Road to the entrance of your property, correct?
I can do everything on our side. We can do everything on Bell Mill in front of our property that we need to do. What I can't do is come in and, and change the, the geometry of this intersection. I don't have that ability.
Can an ambulance and fire truck pass on Bell Mill Road?
After we get finished widening it, you can.
The full length of it?
The full length of our second entrance, yes, sir.
Okay, just your entrance. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reuter.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say, we are doing a plan for the entire county right now. Um, and we're going to look at this area and every other area of the county. And I can go ahead and tell you, there's absolutely no money that I know of in the county budget to widen Hunter Road or any other road. Um, and if we did have money today, it would take years. And so I appreciate all the commentary about what the county should do. The county commission knows the budget of this county better than anybody else. They go through it all the time. And so I would just suggest that we, as the staff has recommended, we do not support uh zoning change here or the next one until we have a plan that actually talks about what we do in terms of improving roads in the county. We don't have county funds to improve, to widen roads. We absolutely, where we have two-lane roads, we need to make them a lot safer because we are not going to be widening them anytime soon. So if you plan on living way out in the county on a two-lane road, you better get used to sitting in some traffic, listen to a podcast or some music. We need to make them safer, but as far as I know, we do not have substantial funds to improve any of these county roads.
Thank you. Mr. Bird.
Mr. Price, has there been a, a consideration of connecting Bell Mill Road across the creek? And our discussion of that possibility, what that would require?
We did look at that. Uh, what happens is Bell Mill has, it crosses the uh creek. First of all, you have a floodway through there, and you'd be looking at a bridge of at least a couple hundred feet, so million-dollar-plus bridge going in that direction. Uh, and also Bell Mill Road back to Snow Hill Road is only a 30-foot right of way, and it's not sufficiently uh wide enough therefore, for us to be able to put in a road that would be sufficient to serve, especially the amount of traffic that that would be generated, uh, has a cut through in through there. So we did explore that, but um, given the constraints, I don't know that that would be a possibility. I think if, uh, and again, if I might just address something that uh, uh, Mr. Reuter stated is that there actually is a mechanism that the county commission could explore as it relates to funding of these roads and.
Go ahead and tell us what it is.
I'm not.
As long as you're going to have commentary during Planning Commission, I'll have it with you.
I'm not.
Let's go ahead. What is it? Tell me what it is.
I'm not at liberty to go.
No, I'd like to hear it from you. You know a lot about this. You can run for office too. Go ahead and tell us.
So uh, given that, again, we think that there are um sufficient means as it relates to deal with this particular issue. And so given this, we would again ask for your approval.
Any other questions?
If I come in, I will say historically, as a young person, there was a bridge across that road, and the flood took the bridge out. It was a, and it was taken out. As a child, young person, I rode across that road. So I know, I know that it did. The nine acres were looking at a park I had seen over my head in water.
Yeah.
When it's, it's flood, that nine acres would be a floodplain, so I don't believe it would make a park. But thank you for the offer.
Mr. Dlau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a point of clarification, when a case that comes before Planning Commission, i- if it does go through with a vote of denial, then what happens with that uh parcel or the opportunities for it moving forward?
Yes. That goes up, it would still go on to the county commissioner for their ultimate decision. Now, that can withdraw county commission if they so choose. But once it's denied, if it's denied, the county commission, uh, you have to wait 12 months before you can come back for zoning. Now, they can still develop under A1. Uh, there's other process. Just because you get the zoning doesn't mean you may not get the plan approved either. There's plan approvals you have to go through, looking at safety features on that regards as, as well.
Mr. Price, Kit, or, or Mr. Lehman, can you speak to what happens if this property's developed and it's developed under A1? Would, could there still be some of these same requirements in terms of infrastructure improvements and those sorts of things?
Well, Mr. Price is correct relative to the intersection at Bell Mill Road and Hunter Road. And there, there's right of way that would need to be purchased uh from adjacent private, private property owners, and they're either willing to, to sell or not. And so I, I think to the point relative to development in the county, a- and again, Mr. Price mentioned a couple of things why mainly related to density that staff didn't, didn't recommend, but, but traffic at that intersection relative to a rezoning and also Mr. Reuter mentioned the, the um, the planning effort that's going forward. Um, the, the property owner has the ability under A1 to, under the current subdivision regen, regulations to develop, and we'd have some responsibilities related to that intersection to make sure that it was appropriately, that was safe. And so we, we may even be looking, we had some discussions the other day at looking at, at improving that intersection. I think there was somebody here last month that said, well, you even paved over private property. I think we paved over private property from our highway department perspective to try to make that a more safe intersection and, and be it, we may have, we may have encroached on private property, I don't know, but we would have to purchase private property to improve that intersection.
Would the developer be required still to widen Bell Mill, Bell Mill Road?
Yeah, we, we could, as a condition for rezoning, uh, absolutely. Um, and, and that's what gives us conditional zoning, and I believe that's why he's offering. Uh, we could still probably from a public health safety have discussions if you platted it under A1 to maybe make some of those improvements or at least dedicate uh some right of way for those safety improvements. So that would all be part of a permit process through a development procedure. But, but the county would have responsibilities for that intersection relative to any improvements for additional um traffic.
And I, I would suggest, you know, if, to what the body wants to do, condition number six is talking about the right of way, I would definitely reach out the legal on the county side. Because the way it's worded, should the, should the county acquire the necessary right of way and or easements along the southern portion of Bell Mill Road at this intersection, the developer shall make the necessary improvements. What if that never happens? What if the county's unsuccessful in getting that right of way? Does that mean this zoning is no longer valid?
No, it means that we would do the work as soon as the county gets the right of way.
Exactly.
But, but if the county doesn't get the right of way, we can't do the work. So it's, it's a chicken and the egg.
That's a weird worded, good word spitting on the condition. I'll leave it at that.
It's problematic. I'm, I'm not even sure how it's enforceable or any of the other elements of it.
I really don't.
I have one other question. Mr. Bird, is there sewer access on this property?
There would be a pump station.
And where is the sewer?
Sewer's in Hunter Road.
So it would have to cross Wolf Teaver Creek. It's gone, sorry, Chair.
No, sir. It would come up Bell Mill Road and go into Hunter Road.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Make the move to deny.
We have a motion to deny that has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You abstained, yeah.
No, I don't. It's good to go. All right. Well, thank you all for your patience as we work through this. First item under new business is case 2023-0111. I think I said three ones. It's located at 5026 Old Godsey Lane, and it's an application to rezon from R1 to C2, and staff has recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? And are you familiar with the conditions? And are you okay with the conditions?
I am.
We have a motion to approve, and it has been properly seconded, and that is a motion with conditions. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case is 2023-0112, and this is located at 1115 and 1117 East 14th Street, and some unaddressed property in the 1100 block of East 14th Street, and it's an application to rezone from R3 and RTZ to UGC. Staff has recommended to deny the UGC Urban General Commercial Zone and approve RTZ with conditions. Is the applicant present? Is there any opposition present?
Uh, Nathan Brown. Uh, I'm the owner of Southern Sun Home Builders. Um, and obviously, these are my two lots located at 1115 and 1117 East 14th Street. Um, I've had several pre-application, pre-submission meetings with some senior um officials over at the Land Development Office. And with the new ordinance regarding short-term vacation rentals, it's my understanding that given the precedent set in this, uh, obviously, as you can see, there's lots of UGC in the area, um, there's lots of development going on there. Um, and it's my understanding, based on some cases that we've gone through together, that UGC is what most of the developers in that area are using. And I could be incorrect about this. I know the ordinance was very new at the time I started the application. So even people at the, at the office were a little unclear about whether UGC versus RTZ is allowed for Airbnbs or short-term vacation rentals. Um, based on the past cases that have come through, um, they said UGC with conditions. Obviously, UGC is a more broad zoning, so they suggested that I go with UGC and obviously have the condition set that this isn't going to be a car wash or, you know, something, another type of business that is allowed. I, I believe it has to be the same zoning as what a hotel would be, which is UGC. Uh, I believe it has to be the same zoning as what a hotel would be, which is UGC. So that's why we were hoping to go with the UGC unless RTZ also allows for the same. Um, which I've, yeah, they, they said it didn't. So that's why they're going, they suggested I go UGC with conditions.
Councilman Ledford?
So this might help you. Um, so short-term vacation rentals are allowed in commercial zones. Uh, so RTZ would not be a qualifier.
Okay.
That helps you. And then you also have to take into consideration eighteen-month waiting period.
Yes, I am aware of that.
And, and just to clarify, Mr. Lefford's comment, those other UGCs that are out there, they're showing on the screen. Yes, those are UGCs. So they have conditional residential uses only. So you could not go in, whoever owns those could not go in and put STVR. As they came back for this body to amend that condition to, to add STVRS. That also kicks in eighteen-month waiting period.
Okay, yeah, um, I'm sorry.
Mr. Anderson?
Uh, one more note that this planning commission cannot offer a variance on, just so you know, is that with a multi-unit building, only 25% of the units could be for a short-term rental. So you couldn't do eight, you could do two of eight.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
So really, at the end of the day, staff looked at this, we didn't really look at it as far as STVRS, we're looking at the zone. Does the zone make sense there? Uh, we recommended, uh, to deny because you can do townhomes and RTZ, you have a similar zone next door to that. The plan supported urban residential, which includes single unit residential ADUs. That's why staff had a recommendation to deny this request and not introduce UGC further into this neighborhood.
Can you just clarify? Mr. Bird?
Just a quick question. If this is rezoned RTZ, the plan can be built as shown, but cannot be used at any time as a short-term vacation rental.
Correct, correct.
Whereas if we accept the original application.
You can do owner occupied, could not do non-owner.
Right.
Yeah. So this, we looked at it strictly from the standpoint of the zoning and the townhome development. Yes, townhomes to be developed either in R3 or RTZ.
And then under UGC, under the applicant's version, only two units could be a short-term vacation rental, non-owner occupied. Thank you.
One thing I would like clarification on is there, so I have two lots currently, adjacent lots. Um, I was told that combining the lots, there's a restriction that each lot, no matter the size of the lot, is permitted up to four townhomes and that's the maximum. Um, so combining it into one lot would actually be counterproductive for me because I would only be able to have four regardless of that lot being larger.
Our, RTZ does allow four, up to four units on one lot, as long as you meet the 7,500 square foot for multi-unit.
But it would also allow for subdivision.
Townhomes, you can just do one, but if you do multi.
He would subdivide the property.
Yes.
If it were RTZ, it would be eight lots.
Yeah, again, we're just.
Having one townhouse.
Yeah, without seeing all that information, it's hard to have a dialogue back and forth. It was, again, looking at that zone. Does that zone, UGC, make sense at that location? We, as staff, looked at it from the perspective of the land use plan, other zones nearby. We, we feel that RTZ is the most appropriate zone at this location to do single, uh, to do the attached units.
Any other questions for the applicant? Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, have you had a chance to meet with Councilwoman Noel on this project?
I have not, but I do have her contact. I just actually was told about setting up a meeting with her like last week.
Yeah, it's usually the real first step. Uh, so I highly recommend you do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, what's the will of the commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question?
Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Brown, is it?
Yes, sir.
Are you, are you okay with the RTZ?
I mean, it's, it's not what I need in order to do short-term vacation rentals. There would be, um, I'm a little confused too with the proposal from, by the staff. It sounds like they're suggesting I, I'm not sure if I could be incorrect. It sounds like they're suggesting combining them into one lot, which would mean I would only have. Okay, it, it is two. Okay, I was confused by.
Telling into conversation that you need, you need further information.
Well, I've just gotten a lot of conflicting.
You look perplexed.
RTZ, he can divide in individual lots if you want to.
Okay.
They divide those in the individual lots. If they're big enough, you can have multiple structures in each individual lot that you have. So also you could get more units there.
Okay, because I do.
If your lot meets the size requirements.
Right, and I believe it does. Um, each, each lot is actually a double-sized lot. Um, so, and they are, they're adjacent to one another as well. I believe one of them is already zoned RZ or, um, RTZ and the other is R3 currently.
On the screen, we have two RTZ lots and then one next door is RTZ, uh, R3.
Correct.
And the R3 is a double lot.
Quick question about the STVRS. Are those allowed in ADUs without any changes or anything?
What's the will of the commissioner?
Move to approve the staff recommendations.
We have a motion to approve the staff recommendations and we do have a proper second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Ledford?
Mr. Brown, I do recommend we talk to, reach out to Councilwoman Noel. Um, because sometimes what happens is when that does not happen, and I've seen this recently, uh, weeks go by and we're seeing cases at councils being deferred for weeks and months on end. So, thank you.
Um, next case on the agenda is a mandatory referral, item three. It's MR 2023 dash zero one one three. And it's for an alley parallel to 200 block of North Bragg Avenue. And it's a right-of-way abandonment and staff is recommended to deny it. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? All right. Mr. Schultz?
Sure. This is Town of Lookout Mountain. Uh, proposes to, um, abandon this right-of-way, combine the surrounding parcels. Uh, there's no zoning gift on this piece of property. Uh, you can see this is an unopened right-of-way, you have single unit residential budding the, uh, right-of-way on either sides. Here's a view of the, the right-of-way just beyond that yellow notification sign. This is a driveway going to the property, but it's beyond that sign. Another view of the site. Here's the applicant, is, is Mr. Parks, you see on the screen here, uh, and the adjacent property owners who own the budding property. Uh, it's different, uh, individuals. Uh, the Laney's own quite a few on the left-hand side, but on the right-hand side is Drail, Parks and Kent. Uh, the applicant did not provide enough information for us as related to the significant property interest that would be, uh, needed to abandon this right-of-way. Staff does recommend the right-of-way to remain open in order to provide future connectivity and access to the rear of the properties of budding the right-of-way if, if needed in the future. Uh, staff recommended to deny. Uh, this will ultimately go on to Town of Lookout Mountain for their, uh, uh, decision whether to, uh, keep open or close. But from our point of view, there wasn't enough information provided to why the interest was needed to ban this right-of-way. We recommended to deny.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? All right, Mr. Parks?
Thank you, uh. Um, I'm Robert Parks, I'm doing it from the forest. Um, so hopefully I just passed out. I think I only had eleven copies of my apologies. But, uh, some more of this information that might have been lacking. Two main reasons to move forward with closing this or abandoning this alley. Uh, the county and subdivision regulations currently say that no secondary road or, or alley can exceed, uh, 12 to 15% in slope. Um, as you can see in the two or three pictures I just handed out, this is from my backyard and the yard on the, up on Bragg, um, while it doesn't provide proof, you did see a 15% demonstration earlier today. Uh, it's much steeper than that and based on doing some topo on the GIS, it's about 17%. I haven't been out there and measured it, but it's over 15. Um, secondly, down at the bottom, this is Tracy Drail. She lives down in the corner. And down on that lower end, it is a lot of the watershed and the topography while maybe flat. Um, as noted in the staff recommendation, it is a waterway. Um, maybe not natural, but it's just a lot of the watershed from up on the hill. And, uh, there's also, you know, we want to maintain it as the owners of the adjacent property. The county can't maintain it, the city hadn't maintained it. The city actually didn't even know it was there when I brought this up to them. Um, and there's a bunch of glass and debris that keeps coming into my yard. Um, it would just be a lot better suited for the town and the residents if the adjacent property owners could maintain it and keep it safe for the kids and the neighborhood. It, it, I don't forever foresee it being used for anything, access to any of the emergency vehicles, service vehicles, anything on the lookout mountain can be achieved through Forest, uh, Sunset or Bragg or Lincoln, which is the north road.
Any questions for the applicant? Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Parks, you said the Town of Lookout Mountain didn't even know it existed until you.
They don't, I regret, but when I called to ask, uh, how to start this process, I assumed it was through them. They both said, no, there's not. When I said there's an alley back there and so, uh.
And so they've never maintained it, never acknowledged it, it's just kind of a.
If it was, it was, as you can see the pictures, I mean, there's a, uh, it's, I don't, I think it's, you can see it in one of those pictures. There's an oak tree that's probably three times as old as everybody in this room. So I, I don't, I don't think it has ever been opened, maintained. There's no utilities, nothing running through there.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it's everybody, apologies, Mr. Chairman, everybody on the map is in agreement?
So I did, do have signatures for everybody except for them because they're here and two others only because I could not coordinate schedules. But the two, so there's three blanks, two of the blanks, I had their verbal yes. I just, when I got this recommendation, the email, I didn't. I've been out of town, they were out of town, couldn't meet up, but everybody else did sign an agreement, as you can see with what I handed out, yes.
So you could theoretically have been maintaining it for years.
I have not, but I sure could.
But you'd like to legally, I guess.
At least my portion.
Yeah.
Mr. Freeman?
Thank you.
Yeah, Brian, just asking and, and Councilman Ledford brought it up. You, you typically ask for utilities to comment relative to closures? Whether they have any utilities. Did you get that?
I don't think we got anything on this. I mean, the staff, well, usually we'll have the staff report if they did. No, nothing was provided on this.
And, and then did y'all have any conversations with the town or did y'all just review it relative to staff?
I did try to, uh, I reached out to the town chief and, um, they did not want to interfere with the RPA process. They said approved, they would, and so I tried to further explain it, but.
Well, sometimes they have policies or staff from a staff level. I know City of Chattanooga has a policy document that, that RPA refers to, that they get input from city staff, just like with Helmtown County zoning regs or issues, they get input. So I wasn't necessarily asking if they had legislative input, but maybe just town manager or some type of, of staff input. So thank you.
We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. It's 2023 dash zero one one four, located at 217 Tremont Street. There's an application to rezone from R3 to ERM3. And staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? All right, and is the applicant present? Mr. Schultz?
Yes, this is 2023 one fourteen, a request to rezone from R3 Residential to ERM3 Urban Edge Multi-Unit Residential. It's Form-based code, uh, proposed uses multi-unit residential, so less than half an acre in size, proposing 15 units as a density of 47-point dwelling units per acre, 47 rooms per acre. Looking at the zoning map, uh, to the north is R3, uh, to the northeast along Tremont Street is R3. If you go a little further, about three parcels to the north, uh, you do see ERM, uh, three, same type zone that I've been requesting. Uh, to the south is property is ERA2, which is residential attached, which is Form-based code. And to the southwest is R3 and C5. And then if you go further south on Tremont, you do run into more Form-based codes such as ESH3. Again, uh, just the north is site in 2018, that property was rezoned to ERA2 and ERN3. So there's, is precedent for Form-based code in this general area. It's a vacant piece of property, uh, to the north is single unit residential, uh, and vacant property. Uh, to the south is single unit residential and to the southeast is institutional church. And you have commercial directed to the south on Tremont. There are some steep slopes in this property, which is indicated on, on the yellow on the screen. This is a view, looking at the site, you see the notification sign. Another view of the site. This is north of the site on Tucker Street. This is south of the site. East of the site. West of the site, Tremont Street. And then this is the multi-unit, uh, that's under construction further north on Tremont Street. This is on ERN3. Uh, this property is in North Shore Area Plan adopted in 2007. It, the plan recommendation is urban medium high-density residential, which is promoted urban residential development pattern at 12 units per acre or greater. Here's a close-up view of what that, uh, plan designation is, which is urban medium high-density residential. Uh, the request is compatible and adopted North Shore Plan. It is compatible surrounding land uses and development reform. It is within close proximity to Form-based code. There is, is similar zones nearby. Staff recommends that development, uh, consider the topography on the site in order to ensure compatibility with adjacent development form and protection of steep slopes in the area. So staff looked at this and recommended to approve with no conditions.
Thank you. Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, does the steep slope vegetation component kick in still in, um, FBC?
Oh, yes, it applies anywhere.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
It's my understanding it does.
All right, we'll hear first from the applicant and then the opposition.
Hi, thank you. Uh, just wanted to highlight a couple of quick things that's already been touched on. Um, our request falls within the, uh, I guess the scope of the 2007 North Shore Plan for a medium and high-density infill. Uh, we think we, um, meet that 12-plus, uh, units per acre. Um, pointing out the spot zoning of 309 Tremont Street, uh, from 2018. Um, also wanted to acknowledge the, the slope, I know the photo up there of 309, uh, Tremont Street. Just wanted to acknowledge that, um, our parcel is further, I guess, below that ridge. So we anticipate less of a, um, intrusive development there. I think the slopes are lesser on our site than they were on that site. Um, and, uh, yeah, we're adjoining, um, another spot zoning or I guess the northern extent of the Form-based code. And, um, as, uh, we showed on our plan, attached with our, um, application, we've accounted for 11 parking spots on site with, um, long-term bike storage, counting to another 25% credit. And then, uh, just wanted to point out as well, the location of a parking garage roughly 350 feet to the south, um, on Tremont and Oliver. That would, uh, rope and count towards another credit towards our parking apartments on site. Um, thank you, and I guess I'll reserve there some of my time.
If you're here in opposition and you wish to speak, come on up to the mic. Reminder to state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm, excuse me, uh, Megan Grabiel. I'm at 219 Tremont, so just right next door to this, uh, site. Um, we respect the fact that this definitely falls into the North Shore Plan for high-density units being built in our area. Uh, we are concerned about the fact that there's already going to be so many one-bedroom apartments just down the road at the, uh, the previously mentioned site. I believe it's around 209 Tremont and what that does for parking. There is a garage down the street, but what we've seen already in our neighborhood from other multi-house dwellings is everybody just parks on the street. It gets very backed up. Um, it's a heavy pedestrian area and we're concerned about safety, the sidewalks, things like that. Um, personally, we're concerned about the elevation and what they're going to do to maintain our yard. It's close, close, close quarters in there. And, um, we know that just down the street, when they were digging out what we affectionately call the pit, there was a lot of erosion that happened that they hadn't necessarily planned on. It took, I think, six years from the first time they dug until they started actually putting up a retaining wall. And I know that that, a lot of that was because it kept coming before this board for review. Um, so I guess part of it is if this is going to go through, we want to see it go through quickly and, um, neatly. Uh, we have lived there for many years now. This is our home and we want to make sure that our home is not falling down into the parking lot of a new apartment complex. Uh, we also have concerns with, um, will there be onsite management for this type of thing? This might be, you know, this is my first time attending something like this. I don't know if this is steps and steps and steps away to talk about. Uh, but we want to make sure that if there are concerns. But we want to make sure that if there are concerns with any part of this process, that there is somebody for us to address these concerns to. I don't know if anybody called the phone number on the application, it's not a working number, because we did actually think to call the developers, and that wasn't possible. I think for us, one of the main concerns really is going to be that property line. You can clearly see that the property on one side is not well-maintained and is not a livable structure. But our house, that blue one right there, is home to my family, and we want to make sure that that stays private, that there's not people coming and going off of our property all day, every day. Not only now during the building process, but you know, what kind of measures are going to be taken in the future? Landscaping, walls, fences, how is that going to stay our private property and not have a rotating cast of characters coming and going off of it?
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Councilman Ledford?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you coming down and welcome to your first meeting. You picked a good one.
Very informative.
There's a lot of complexities and there are a lot of jurisdictional boundaries, a lot of what you just said is not a planning permission.
Okay.
Jurisdiction, so I want to be clear. The best thing I can think of is you now have the developers or the parties that are interested standing right behind you. So this is a great opportunity to get to know them and to hear from them and exchange numbers. But I do appreciate you coming down and, and being a part of this process. And, and I think it's commendable because you've taken a lot of time out of your day, and I, I know it's not easy.
Naptime is way over at home. The toddler is awake.
Thank you, and thank you for recognizing the land use plan. I think that's really critical, we miss that sometimes, and I really appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you.
I think there was somebody else that wanted to speak in opposition. Is that right, ma'am?
Yes, but I want to speak on the same point. I also, Jim, I live at 502 Tremont. And speaking in terms of the insufficient parking that's been noted for this piece, that stretch of parking spaces that are available from Fraser and going up Tremont, there's only parking allowed on one side of the street. It's already maxed every day, all day, weekends even worse with people going to Coolidge, visiting Fraser. It's not unusual to have UPS, FedEx, Uber, Lyft double parked out into the street with the 100-block development and trying to make that curve, the safety is, is really of prime concern, as well as the quality of life on Tremont. So I would add those things and, and ask you to please consider the parking issue and the amount of traffic.
Thank you, ma'am. Applicant can come back up.
First, I apologize, that was my cell phone, I've probably screened your calls, but I didn't get any voicemails. With regards to the parking, I know we, as I mentioned, there's the parking garage down the street that we're hoping to count as a credit towards our site. And I think with our location and with the onsite bike storage that we plan to provide, we're hoping to, you know, further reduce those requirements and encourage our tenants to keep a car parked onsite and use their bikes. The, I guess with the slope in the adjoining properties, you know, we'll defer to the engineers on that. But it's not our intent to have this drawn up for six years either, that's very much not in our best interest. So, yeah, we would, we'd like to do that as quickly as cleanly and, you know, efficiently as possible. Is there anything?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, I will be recusing myself, I have an interest in property adjoining across from this, I'll refuse myself. But I do have a question, how much parking will you provide for your, for your units there?
11 spaces.
11 spaces, and how many units will you have?
15.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question.
Mr. Burke?
I'm venturing a little bit outside anything that we can really rule on, but I'm curious if the parking is going to be distinct from the rent in this case. Do you have any plans on how you're going to manage, who gets to park where, since there's not one space per unit?
No, we would not, or at least we haven't discussed that, any sort of reserved or assigned parking.
Okay, cool, thank you.
We don't vote on site plans, but I get, I'm just curious, the, the unopened alleys, why, why this development scheme doesn't take into account either of those? We considered that, we discussed it in the previous middle meeting, and I think there's a prior hearing where they rejected that request. So it was part of our initial plan.
Questions for the applicant? It's the will of the commissioner.
Just a general note before I make a motion, parking's going to continue to be an issue in this city, but this is a perfect site for something like this, in my opinion. It's right next to the Carter Garage. The North Shore Shuttle stops right there, I mean, you said 350 feet, I was looking on my phone, that looks about proper estimate. So I know it's always going to be controversial to approve a development with fewer parking spaces than there are units, but that's the direction we're moving. Parking takes up a lot of space, and it's going to become increasingly rare, especially in these more desirable neighborhoods, so with that, I would move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Item five on our agenda. It's a mandatory referral, 2023-0115, and it's for right-of-way abandonment for an unnamed street off of 600 block of Nye Circle, and has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. If, oh, I'm sorry. Come on up.
This is my first time doing this, too. Everybody's looking at the map.
Can you state your name and address for the record, and just for the record, we have a motion on the floor, and we have taken action on it, but we want to hear from you.
My name is William Burkhart, and I live at 605 Nye Circle, which is on the map there, just right below the dark red abandonment issue. So I've been there 19 years. If anybody wants to know, this is, to the left there where it says Dayton Boulevard, that's the tunnel, that's the Cherokee Tunnel. There are seven houses, we all live above the tunnel there. So this decision really only affects 20 people in our city, so I'm here to represent those 20 people. Doubting any of you, every driven up there. That's my house right there. So, one, I've been here long enough, it's my first time, but maybe I'm here to ask about how quickly it's come to an approval. So it might be smarter for me to ask for an extension on this. I don't know what the rules are about the sign, I just saw it last week. The sign was placed right through the tunnel on Dayton Boulevard, where the application states it is for 600 Nye Circle, which is across.
Can I just explain what, what's happening here? The applicant, Tyler Callahan, has requested of this body to abandon it right-of-way, which is that yellow area. So that would no longer be able to be built as a road. It was originally plotted as if it were going to be a road, or it would have utilities in it, or something like that. The city staff reviewed it and has determined that there's a not, not a city interest in that piece of property, meaning there are no public utilities in it, and it's not currently be, being used as ingress.
I understand this, I've lived there for 19 years.
Okay, so what specifically do you have concern with that becoming?
Big concerns, really, of getting home. If we can go back to the other map where it shows Dayton Boulevard. So if no one has driven up this road, to the left, so if you, if anybody's ever been up to Channel 3 newsroom, the Pinnacle High Rise, there's one way in there, you can go to Channel 3, you can go to the Pinnacle, or you continue to the top of the hill where we all live, where the 20 of us live. It's one way in, it's one way out, tunnel on both sides, the, the road is failing. You know, we, we've called this in for 20 years, but it's hard to get any love when there's 20 people on a hill. There's a 100-year-old retaining wall on the east-west side of the tunnel. The road is sinking and the retaining wall is failing. The opposite side of Dayton Boulevard, where if you see their, their red spot that they're asking for abandonment, where it joins, that is the house, there's a house there in that turn, and that is their driveway on the east side of the tunnel. From all the erosion coming down there, we're losing that access, and we're also losing where the retaining wall is, which like a 200-year-old oak tree fell on and, and smashed the wall even worse, and they said they, you know, maybe fix that for us, but. But there's, there's a worry of all of us to be able to get off this hill. There is no other way for us to get off this hill.
You currently use that?
Everything else is.
Do you drive on that now?
No, no, you cannot drive on it now. But if our road were to fail, there's no alternate, right now, like a fire truck can't even get to us, there's no, I, I know, I'm trying not to squirrel on this, but there's, it's really, if our road fails, there's no way to get off of our road. So that road there being the city, and then the city owns the, what is it, 80 acres? It would very easily, basically, I don't want, want you guys to be Indian givers. If you give that away today, can you take it back and get us off the hill later?
Yes.
You can.
We can't, but Councilman Ledford can't take anything that, through eminent domain. But, I mean, he, you, I'm, I'm, I'm just.
Sure, yeah, yeah, it's just, it's a concern.
I'm just saying you can take it back via eminent domain, but here, here's the point, we've already.
There, you'd, you'd know the, the concern.
No, I wasn't saying that.
I'll give you a little pushback.
No, okay, so let me just say, the city's not going to build that as a road, ever, in my lifetime. We've already taken action on it, I think we've heard your concerns. Does anybody wish to do anything different? Okay, thank you.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah, you can say, say one.
The city engineer actually called me on Friday because I, I didn't see the sign until last week. It's not at 600 Nye Circle, it's down on Dayton Boulevard, so, you know, I'm not asking to deny, I'm asking for a postponement.
Well, we've already taken.
Look at, when the engineer said, I'm going to go up there next week and take a look at that for you, because I've never been up there, and I'm near town, and the engineer, so a, a simple.
Mandatory referrals go before city council, correct?
That's correct.
So this case will go before city council in, it'll be on the agenda in like a month and a half, usually. So get with your city council member and talk to them, and they will go through the final hearing at city council before this becomes law.
Chip Henderson, okay, thank you very much.
All right, item six on our agenda, case 2023-0116, is located at 1133 and 1137 Old Pineville Road, and it's an application to rezone from R1 to R3, and has staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you did, we did receive some emails and opposition as well.
Okay, and is the applicant present? Thank you. All right, we'll hear first from staff, then the applicant, then opposition.
This is 2023-116, rezone from R1 to R3 residential zone, proposed use is multi-unit residential. Roughly what's being rezoned is 1.5 acres in size. If you can see on the zoning map, the property to the north and west of this site's already zoned R3, so including the existing R3 and what's being requested today to be rezoned, which is highlighted in red. The total number of units is 108 units for this overall development, that's a density of 24 dwelling units per acre. Again, there is existing zoning nearby, would be an extension of existing zoning. It's currently used as a single-family home, there's a dog park to the north, single unit to the south, vacant land to the east, across Old Pineville Road. And to the west is multi-unit residential, so there are similar uses nearby. This is about 780 feet to the south of Highway 27, northbound entrance. There are some slope issues on the site. Here's a view of the site. You can see, here's a view, another view of the site, you can see the apartments just behind this property. This is a Jason single unit residential dwelling. This is east of the site, Old Pineville Road. This, again, is a multi-unit development that's being under construction on Delwana Terrace. Staff recommended to approve, the request is compatible with surrounding land uses, it is compatible with surrounding development form and zoning in the area. This request is an extension of existing R3 zoning, this is two smaller properties of a much larger R3 development area. Currently, there's no adopted land use plan to provide guidance on the introduction of higher density along Old Pineville Road. Staff recommends no further expansion of the R3 zone in this area without future plan guidance, which we're undertaking today. So staff recommends to approve this request.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Can the applicant speak first? Yes, please.
Good afternoon, my name is David Fedati, I'm project manager for Wise Construction. I don't know that I've got a lot to add, that was pretty much, you know, we, we, we do have a bunch of R3 in the neighborhood existing. The purpose was to not try and put 108 units on these two specific parcels, but to expand the area that we had the availability to build on, which would require the use of some of this particular land here. Yes, thank you. I don't know that I have anything to add beyond that.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? All right, we'll hear from the opposition. Just a reminder, there are two, four, six, seven of you, and there are nine minutes total.
I'll be quick.
Thank you.
My name is Valerie Epstein, and I own 1129 Old Pineville Road, which would be directly adjacent to this. And I have to say, I guess, number one, I'm shocked. I know John Wise, talked to John Wise, and he's built a lot of apartments in and around Chattanooga, but this is shocking. 108 units on 1.5 acres on Old Pineville Road. If you've been to Old Pineville Road and you know what the law says, Griffin versus Board of Zoning, a recent case before the Tennessee Court of Appeals, you have to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. This is a dead-end road. Stormwater runs down it all the time, it's unsafe as it is, there's poor ingress and egress. One is a blind curve onto Pineville Road, which is, you can't even turn right without the bottom of your car scraping against the pavement. The other is a curvy, very steep road going up a hill. It is fair to say that no fire truck or ambulance could get down there, and to put another 108 units where basically 15 single-family homes are, is shocking. This is to say, I understand that one of the other requirements or the laws is that you have to conform to the surrounding area. One thing I think that's been missed by the planning development is that the existing apartments that also owned by John Wise the existing apartments that also owned by John Wise are at the top of this Pineville Road. They're not where Old Pineville Road is, which is actually a very nice, small little valley. So putting something here was just totally have an adverse effect on all of our property values, noise, traffic, parking. This is a very, actually very wildlife green area that, to be quite honest, I think has historic value. If you talk to John Ogden, who's the chief of the Chickamauga Battlefield Historic Society, he will tell you that this is where both Confederate and Union troops came through, and I personally have found artifacts that are over a hundred years old. This is an area that ought to be preserved by the city in keeping with the Brown's Ferry Road crossings. But everyone in our neighborhood, and unfortunately, there are only fifteen or so of us in this area, but there was a petition signed five years ago with over fifty individuals in the surrounding area that did not want development on an area behind, which I think, um, you're, I'm not sure which direction, maybe that would be to the freeway side. The whole neighborhood is against it. And again, I think this drawing is misleading because Wise already has apartments up on the top of the hill. They do not need to be in this valley, this beautiful little valley filled with greenery, filled with single family homes, nice folks. And it will be a horrible, horrible public safety violation. I'm an attorney. I've already been asked to represent the members who live in this area. And, um, I, I just think that it needs to be denied.
Mr. Chairman, let me clarify, opposition's coming forward. The hundred and eight units is total, not only the one point five acres, the one point five acres is what's being rezoned, but the hundred and eight includes this R one area as well as adjoining R three, so it's not the one point five acres.
Right.
Just to clarify for the record.
Thank you. Somebody else wish to speak?
Uh, my name's Austin Barber. I live at eleven hundred Old Pineville Road, along with my sister back there. Um, I try to be quick. Uh, again, I, I do think that that's not an accurate, uh, reflection of what it will look like. I is surrounded by R three, but, uh, as she stated, there's no access off of our road currently. Uh, our road doesn't have lines. Uh, there's a lot of potholes. There are multiple places where two cars could not pass each other safely. Uh, a hundred and eight units would, in my estimation, that's at least eight times the amount of individual dwellings that are on the road right now. Uh, the application estimated seven, I think it was seven hundred and ninety-one car trips per day on our road, which, uh, we see a small fraction of that, um, as far as egress on the north side on Delwanna. The site plan that I saw, it really doesn't show how it would get onto that road because the direction that it's going, it would come straight onto, uh, a road that's coming down at a very steep angle and then takes an immediate almost ninety degree left turn. So you can't see anything around the corner. And then that road comes to a dead end where both roads dead end right into where twenty-seven is. And, uh, I don't think that there's any road signage there. And I live at the intersection that she's talking about, that you can't even get up onto the road, most cars without the bottom scraping. And it is, it's an angle that looks like this from the side, and it's an angle that looks like this if you're coming up to it. So you have to make a hairpin right turn up a hill with cars coming up Pineville Road at forty-five, fifty miles an hour. So a car is on you before. If you don't, you can not see it from the left, start on that road and it's on you within a few seconds. Same thing coming from the other direction. Cars come down that hill. Uh, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, uh, industry down on Moxon Bend, so large trucks that can't stop very quickly coming up and down that hill. And, uh, we have no walkable area anywhere near us, so that road is the only road that serves as any place that you can walk around.
I'll let other people keep talking. Thank you.
I have a speech impediment and I'm brain damaged. Uh, uh, so, uh, I ask like to be, I ask for y'all's patience. Especially since we, we waited for almost two hours with all the other stuff. Uh, I'm at one one two seven, uh, uh. Again, I have a speech impediment. We aren't, we, we weren't really told about the other thing that's the expansion that's already under construction, but is it completed? At least to the best of my knowledge, we weren't, uh, we weren't told about the, like, that's still under construction. We weren't given a chance to oppose that, for one thing. And also me personally, I can't be one hundred percent certain that it's because of the construction and/or lack of retaining wall, but there is surface runoff and drain, storm drainage. And it, not just water and mud and stuff, but trash almost every other time I go out there, like, like, like random, random, random trash. Uh, and if I'm not, if I'm, again, I'm sorry about my speech impediment. I don't, I think some of it is, may or may not be coming from the dumpsters. Uh, coming straight down the hill, right behind my prob, uh, on, because I'm at the, I'm at the lower part of the hill. These apartments are at the top of the hill. So what, like, the way it looks, it's a V shape. Uh, where, so the V, the V that's on the top of the hill is on, uh, was where the apartments are. We're at the bottom. All this stuff washes at the bottom. Uh, and it, it, all this stuff has been washing like down onto my property faster than I can clean it up. And I already have a bunch of other stuff going on and I, again, I, I, so I, it's hard for me to, like, and now all of a sudden, and the road is, it's not, uh, the, the road is filled, filled with potholes. It's not exaggerated. There are more, literally more potholes than there are houses. And they're not just small potholes either. They're extremely deep. They're like walking as a pedestrian can trip on it. The road is literally sinking to, into the ground.
Sir, the, the time for opposition has run up. Thank you. So we do have only a total of nine minutes. I'm going to give another two minutes. So if you could just add two minutes to the clock, I got four seventeen here, so four nineteen will conclude the comments from opposition. Ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jan Turner. I live at eleven thirty Old Pineville Road. And that's directly across from where the apartments will be. Right now, we have a lot of drainage coming down and our road is covered in water every time it rains hard. And it floods in front of their fence when it rains hard. The other thing is that we have a lot of noise. In the summertime, it's not quite as bad because you have the trees to catch some of the noise. But with quarter J being right there in the wintertime, the noise and that because it is a valley, there's just like an echo chamber there. So everything that's done on top of the road, up on top of the hill where the Hayden Place apartments are, echoes back and forth. So that's, it's, it's going to create a lot of noise. The other thing, our roads are not good. There are, there's really no easy way out of there. And once you get out, getting onto Signal Mountain Road right now is beginning to be a problem because there's so much more traffic from Hayden Place. And what we do to sort of combat some of that, you know, you have the Baylor School traffic too. We get a schedule from Baylor School to find out when they're going to have an event. So we can stay at home because you cannot get out nor in off of, off of Signal Mountain Road when they're having something. It's, it's already so crowded there. And there's a lot of accidents in that area. Thank you.
Thank y'all for being here. The time for opposition's up. I'm going to let the applicant respond to what he's heard here. No, no, sir. That's what everybody does every month. So what happens every month is somebody sits here for multiple hours. We go until five or six o'clock often, and this commission does that every single month. So we, we know the pain full well. These, these are, for the most part, all volunteers. And so while I know you've all been here for now, uh, what, three and a half hours? Right, three and a half? Am I doing the math right? We, we normally sit here for four or five hours. This is planning commissioned in Hamilton County. It, planning is a messy process and it's very time consuming, so. It will go through a second reading. Yes, ma'am. Come on back up.
Thank you. Um, our goal is certainly not to be an impediment to the neighborhood. Um, you know, regarding the, the other construction project that is underway. You know, the, uh, erosion controls have been put in place and will continue to be put in place as needed as we go through. Uh, massive retaining walls are actually there that was required per the site plan. Um, as far as these are concerned, I did, I appreciate the clarification that not all one hundred and eight units are being attempted to be on one point five acres. It was you know, spanning the back portion of the, of, of, of our property. And there was a parking concern mentioned, and I did want to address that, that the intention would be to park everything on the site. We, you know, we're not going to ask for any kind of street parking. We're aware that the, the street is in need of repair. Um, we certainly wouldn't add to the burden that the, the, that the neighborhood is already facing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for those of you in opposition, have you all reached out to, since it's time? To Councilman Henderson? You have not? Okay. So this body is a recommendation body and, uh, so I would highly recommend that you reach out to Councilman Henderson and as you move forward, since you have not done so.
Mr. Chairman, there should be a handout in the back of the room that tells you the next steps. This will go in front of the city council on September twelfth at six P M. Possibly.
What's the word for commission?
Chairman?
Mr. Anderson?
I didn't hear anybody jumping up to approve this, so I don't know what city council's going to do, but, uh, I moved to deny.
We have a motion to deny and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. All right, next item on our agenda, item seven, case twenty twenty-three dash zero one one seven is located at sixteen nineteen Gray Road and has a staff recommendation to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? You're here in opposition. Okay, and then is the applicant present? All right. Mr. Schultz?
Yes, this is twenty-three, twenty twenty-three one seventeen. Uh, this is not a rezoning request. This is a special permanent request for a residential plan unit development for single unit residential. Uh, you see on the zoning map, everything around this property is on R one. Uh, property's about six point three acres in size, opposing thirty-one units. That's a density of four point nine two dwelling units per acre. There's been no recent zoning history on this site along Gray Road. Uh, in twenty twenty-one to the east of this property, uh, there was a request to rezon from R one to RTZ with, uh, with a pud that was approved, the density of five point eight dwelling units per acre. Uh, this is about nineteen hundred feet to northeast Brainerd Road. Uh, you can see on the, on the map here, land use map, this is a vacant piece of property to the south. And north is single unit residential. Uh, to the east across Gate Gray Road is single unit residential. Under the west is single unit residential. If you go further south, there is a church. This property to the west, uh, does have a floodway and flood plain. I mean, sorry, a flood plain associated with it. There's a view of the site. I'll go through these quickly, another view of the site. This is south of the site. East of the site. Uh, this is sites on left-hand side. This is Gray Road. This property is in the East Brainerd Area Eleven Plan, which is adopted in twenty twenty-one. Uh, the place type recommendation is suburban residential. Primary uses include single family detached dwellings. Um, with densities ranging anywhere from three to ten dwelling units per acre, depending on a variety of factors, including infrastructure, uh, capacity or proximity to schools or parks. Uh, this also has natural resources overlay on it due to the flood plain associated to the west of the property. There's a closer view of that land use plan recommendation. Uh, the request is compatible adopted Area Eleven Plan. It is compatible surrounding land uses and development reform. Staff does recommend a condition to prevent development on a portion of this flood plain to ensure compatibility with the Area Eleven Plan goes. Uh, public concerns noting the plan about flood plain preservation. Staff recommended to approve this request with a condition, uh, no residential lots allowed west of the one hundred year flood plain. Uh, I'll show you this. We have several site plans submitted with this request. This is the preliminary site plan that was submitted originally with the request. Uh, we have another site plan submitted on eight four twenty twenty-three. Uh, then finally another one on Friday, uh, eleven twenty-three showing thirty-one lots. And the area in the circle are those three units that are west of the flood plain. The staff is recommending that those, uh, not be part of this development. So staff recommends to approve, uh, with those being, uh, removed from the pud.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for staff? Mr. Price?
Thank you. Mike Price, MAP Engineers. So we did, uh, have a community meeting, uh, which has precipitated the changes that you see in the site plans, uh, that have been made and what you see before you now. Uh, so we did start with thirty-one, uh, homes. Uh, and after discussion with, uh, the residents, we have changed that to twenty-seven. Uh, and what we basically have done is we have, uh, changed the minimum lot width to be from fifty-five to sixty feet. We are still keeping the three lots that are to the west of the flood plain. Those, uh, lots are not in the flood plain where the homes would be constructed. We would simply construct a private driveway from the cul-de-sac to provide access to those three lots. I'd also point out it's important for us to keep those three lots as those are some of the larger lots that are on the development overall as a whole. Uh, we've come up with a number of conditions, uh, coming out of the neighborhood meeting. Uh, we have a total of seven conditions. Uh, I'd be happy to pass those out. So coming out of that, we agreed to, uh, the community lot, uh, there in the cul-de-sac area will have a gazebo type structure with outdoor seating and landscaping. Uh, number two, we'll dedicate a ten-foot right away along Gray Road, um, to the city of Chattanooga and also do some road widening. That was, uh, at the insistence of, uh, Councilman Ledford. Uh, the mil, minimum buildable lot area to be fifty-five feet, the minimum lot width is to be fifty-five feet. Uh, in through there, and that's at the place of building. So we do have those three sort of flag lots in the back. A decorative fence with landscaping to be installed along Gray Road and trees to be planted at spacing no less than twenty-five feet on center. Uh, there is, uh, a lady that lives across the street, um, it's Nancy, and so this was a, uh, hope, uh, on our behalf that we think by providing this, uh, landscaping in this area, so as to ameliorate what she would see directly across the street from where she lives now. Uh, we also added that evergreen trees be planted at spacing of fifteen feet on center along the rear property lines of lots two through fourteen and twenty-three, twenty through thirty is indicated on the drawing. So basically what we're looking at, even though it's not required, we felt it was appropriate to plant, uh, so there's one house on each side, north and south, uh, of this one large residence. And so what we looked at doing was planting uh, evergreen trees at fifteen feet on center, uh, between us and them. We didn't want to put them in there any tighter or denser than that because we don't really want to create a hedge row. But we did feel like, uh, that's an appropriate spacing to provide screening, uh, through there. Uh, then we also added that a ten-foot vegetated buffer required along the rear of lots sixteen through eighteen. And then last, so as we all are aware, accessory dwelling units are now allowed, uh, in the city. So theoretically, instead of just putting the twenty- So theoretically, instead of just putting the twenty-seven lots, you could have a total of fifty-four residents, if you will, in the area, two per each lot. So we agreed to strike that as a condition, so that would only be single-family homes, only no accessory dwelling units. So we think with this particular plan, we've come a long way in terms of addressing the issues raised by our neighbors. And we think this is an appropriate use, given this area and given the changes that we've made. So if there are any questions, be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Price? Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we had a credible three-hour meeting a couple of Monday nights ago. And I thank everybody for coming out. A lot of great points were made about development. As you can see, we're dealing with this all across. We kind of got into that conversation. I'm not sure if some folks really believe me. We were talking about density, but to such, such a degree, but look at what we were, you saw today in the county. So mitigating those concerns, I think, was very instrumental in the conversation, also knowing and holding developers accountable to making things as best as possible, because there is a by right situation that we cannot ignore by law. So I want to really thank everybody. And I know that conversations took place, meetings took place, and I know that these conditions came out of that. But I really just wanted to say thank you for, for coming out and, and for participating, because now you've come here, there's a lot of neighbors on Gray Road. And you've seen the process. You've seen and heard the conversation that we're having across this county. And it is, it is painful sometimes and it's difficult. So we're fighting, fighting for the very best that we can get, and you've seen evidence of that today. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, for doing that, for being part of this. That wasn't directed at you, Mike.
I understand.
Thank you. We'll hear from those of you that wish to speak and are here in opposition.
Scott Burkholt, sixteen twenty-five Gray Road, immediately to the north of the subject site. And I think Mr. Schultz, yeah, in the PDF. I think Mr. Schultz has a PDF available to guide my presentation real quickly. I want to recognize there were about twenty-five people from the neighborhood. And many of those people, if not all of them, were reflected on the next page of this file, signing a petition against this proposed development. It was uniform in their opposition. I think there are only thirty-four current residences on Gray Road and adding the twenty-seven would almost double the number of residences on the road, so that's a significant increase. And the concerns that were articulated over and over again by the community were essentially traffic and safety concerns. If we go to the next page of this file, Gray Road, very simply, is already too narrow, too busy and too dangerous. The developer recommended and understood that the minimum width of a street, even for his subdivision, would be twenty-two feet. But right at the entrance to the subject site, the width of Gray Road is only seventeen feet, one inch. So Ms. Kemper, who is here today, who lives immediately across from the subject site, has had three wrecks in her yard in the last year. A lot of the times, people will drive off, pull up and drive off without, there's no cop, police report involved. Mr. Fryer, who's immediately south to the site, Bobby Fryer, has a brick and steel fence and a brick mailbox that has been taken out three times. And the last time cost six thousand dollars to replace. There have been a number of times where people have just been run off the road, and nobody is doing anything wrong. It's just simply too narrow of a road. So you have a truck pulling a skid steer on a trailer and that, or a school bus will push you off the road. Two Fridays ago, I had to leave the roadway and drive for twenty yards on my neighbor's, with my right tires on my neighbor's property on their front lawn, because the road is too narrow. When you come into this road from the Jenkins intersection, is a sharp J curve with obstructions of visibility. So you literally are coming towards on Jenkins to stay straight to go onto Gray Road. It's a jog to the left, but you have a curve at Bracket Manor where they're doing development and trees in the way that obstruct that view. So it's a very dangerous intersection to approach from that direction. Gray Road is a cut-through road to get to East Brainerd Elementary, which we all know is already overcrowded. That's why the county, why they're buying the Signisite to have another school facility. Of course, they're adding three hundred and forty homes at the Signisite off of Goodman Road, not too far away. People also cut through going the other direction to get, get to East Brainerd Road or to get up to Gun Barrel if they're coming towards Ivy Gap. So it's a, it's a problem where they had to put in digital speed signs. That's ineffectual at slowing people down. The city has consistently refused to put in speed bumps, which would slow people down. So that's a big problem. Cars are just having to go off the road and take out mailboxes. Mr. Sand, who's immediately to the south of Ms. Kemper, has, and is here today, has had his mailbox taken out upwards of a dozen times from people leaving the roadway. When nobody's driving dangerously, when people are following the speed limit, you have to get off the roadway because a truck or a school bus or a car to bus cannot be passed going in the opposite direction. We could go to the next page. This shows you some of the recent developments in the site. Nine hundred and ninety-three feet to the south is right behind the Waffle House, and there's a big parcel that's being rezoned from R one to C two for a significant commercial development. Then you have two places that are reflected with the Heritage Walk development to the southeast of the site. One is about twelve hundred feet. The second long red line is seventeen hundred and fifty feet. At the seventeen hundred and fifty feet mark, those homes are largely built. A lot of those are developed, but the closer line is where they're doing more development. At the end, that Heritage Walk development is going to be two hundred and fifty additional houses right here at that J curve where you see the Jenkins turn and, and where you'd have to go onto Gray Road from there. In addition to that, five hundred and fifty-three feet across the Gray Road, directly across and immediately behind Ms. Anita Hitchcock, who's adjacent to Ms. Nancy Kemper, you have another development from the same developer that's putting in forty-two townhomes on one lot. And then that's on top of two recent developments that have just been completed at five hundred and eighty-five feet and about, not seven hundred and eighty-five feet. And those are ASBIL subdivisions that have done the same thing, which has added the density to this area. And then immediately, most recently, I think, is directly north, fifteen hundred and ninety-nine feet from the subject site is you have a school, approval of two lots that were sold to a church that also is going to have a school. So you have some institutional uses that are being added, which will further exacerbate. What I've heard from Mr. Price, and I'll say that we have had some communications. I think they've been fruitful. I don't think they've gone far enough. But what I've heard is, well, this is a problem, whether it's Snow Hill Road or Bell Mill Road or whatever. You know, those are things that should have been done a long time ago, so we can't be responsible for dealing with road problems. So the problem is, we can be responsible to not exacerbate an already bad situation. And that is really what we're dealing with. And on the next slide, you'll see some of these densities that are going to be adding further burdens to an already overburdened infrastructure. And the next, we're asking that this be denied. It's, it's not a safe road. It's a danger. It's out of character with the entirety of the road, because every other lot on the road has, you know, is a residence on an appropriately sized lot. The comparisons that were in the staff reports seem a little not really on point, because they're looking at densities off of Hawk Run Lane and Schuler Creek Road, but not on Gray Road. They're only pointing to the immediate site to the north and the immediate site to the south. But if you look at the entirety of Gray Road, the density is much lower than what has been summarized in the staff report. But this is what we think should be done. We should fix the road and deal with the overcrowding issue and the dangers that that proposes, rather than exacerbate an already acknowledged problem of, of traffic safety in a road that's only seventeen feet wide.
I think there's a gentleman behind you that wishes to speak as well.
Yes, and I would say, in wrapping up, if approved, I want to look at this. This is the back of the lot. This is where they want to put the three lots. Past the floodplain, building a driveway through the floodplain and adding these lots. We ask that you go with staff recommendation on that to deny. And then with regard, if you do approve the, the development, if you approve the special permit, which we would ask that you deny, if you nevertheless approve, we would ask that you also impose the condition of fencing for around the perimeter of the pud for security, for dogs, little children. I have a driveway that traverses along that property line to the north, seven hundred feet. And I'm afraid of kids running out of backyards and coming into the driveway or dogs crossing over the property in the driveway. So a fence would address that concern. And then the screening trees should go the length of the property as well as the fence. That's what we're asking for if the permit is approved. Thank you.
Yes, I'm William Edden, six-nine-six Bush Road. I'm west to the back of the area. I've got three acres there. My dad's lived there fifty years. He died a couple of years ago. I bought it sixteen years ago from him. And the flood comes down the side of my, Hawk Run raised the property years ago, thirteen feet, which makes a lot more water. They got a retention, tension pond, but it doesn't hold the water. And then it comes around behind Bobby Fryer's area and behind that area. And just to let you know, if they build these three homes back there, it's really going to make flooding even worse, because they're just going to build that more, which is going to fall, turn that into a funnel instead of a water runoff like it's supposed to be, like it's always been for a hundred years. And that's my worry is, is it's going to wash out my property, which I have three acres. And I've been there, you know, me and my dad's for, you know, almost seventy years. And it's sad that this is happening like this, because the three houses that they're trying to block is, is a, is a line of forest that they already said that they're going to be able to do this, whether it gets voted in or not. Which they shouldn't be able to put these three houses back there, because it's going to really create a bad problem for runoff, the water runoff. I know it's, it's a fantasy right now, but that's different. It already floods as it is. So just to let you know that we're very concerned on my side, on Bush Road, I'm behind it. And we come down Joyner, and you come down Downhinter, and then you come all the way down to Ziegler, which has never been paved. We don't have natural gas in my area. We've never had any improvements at all. And that's a forest that the city doesn't take care of our neighborhood over in that area, because there won't have development. But the problem is, you don't take care of the roads and the gas and gas lines and that area there, unless you're a new development. And even the new Hawk Run doesn't have gas, natural gas. Natural gas, people said they wanted thirty thousand dollars to ring to my house. You know, a tornado hit us three years ago. And I rebuilt the barn and minium and everything. The bodies went way up. But the problem is, the roads and the, the gas lines and, and the sewage has not been fixed. So just let you know, just because you're building a new neighborhood, you're letting the other neighborhoods go down. And we used to have East Brainerd Road, that looks like a ghetto over there, and you know, that's supposed to be developed sooner or later.
Thank you, sir.
That's our main concern is the water runoff. It's super bad and it's too tight for them to get in off Gray Road back in that area. And we have a lot of, we need more police, because we have a lot of people walking across my property and Bobby Fryer's that's taking shortcuts to the mall. And we need more police presence over in that area.
So this will, this will be, what we're going to do today is, we're going to make a recommendation either for approval or denial.
Yes, sir.
It's going to go before city council. City council is where some of these concerns need to be taken out.
Make it denial. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So again, if you read staff reports, they indicate that by right, that there's roughly approximately thirty-eight dwelling units that could be developed in through here. I don't think you can actually get that many, but what we talked about with some of the residents at the neighborhood meeting is that twenty-five is probably achievable number. And if you do those with accessory dwelling units, the density is even far greater, which we can do by right today versus what we're asking for. So I think that this is a appropriate dense, density as it relates to what we're doing in through here. The area in the back, as it relates to flooding concerns, again, we can address that fairly easily. If you notice on the drawing, we've got that sixty-foot water quality buffer on either side, pretty much most of which that area is inside the floodplain through there. So I don't see us flooding anybody out or doing anything inappropriate. And I think with the seven conditions that we have proposed, that we have met the burden as it relates to screening our neighbors and doing the things that are right. And with that, would ask for approval.
Thank you. Councilman Ledford?
So this is a tough situation that we see in the city quite frequently, and we're going to see more of it as we move through. This is, I'm repeating a lot of what we talked about for three hours. The folks don't want the pud, and I, 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 I understand that. What I also understand is the law. And the law says that there are probably twenty-five homes that can be built there. Negotiations happened as planned, and then will probably continue, depending on what this body does, whether they break down or not. We're talking about two more houses in the pud versus twenty-five homes that possibly could be built without any of these conditions, without any of these concerns being addressed. And, 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 and just to kind of share with you how tough it is to be in a position of being a representative is the folks in the area that I represent want me to vote no on something that is actually, could be very detrimental to their well-being, because they want me to stand with them. This was, came out of the meeting, and I went home to my wife and I said, wow, this is really difficult, because they get nothing. They get no rights. They get their voice not even heard, but they want me to vote no. And, you know, and even what Mr. Scott said, you know, I don't want, I want you to stand with us, but if you do it, here's a good list of so, you know, you, you kind of box, you, it, it's tough being a representative, because you understand what the law is and what people can do with their rights or the property rights. And property rights are important. I hope that all of you all appreciate what property rights are. We don't have property rights. It's one of our basic foundations in our government and the way our constitution was set up. And that's, that's something that I do stand for is, is your personal property right. So it's real interesting, the box that you get put in, in this position. I just wanted to share that from a personal perspective. But anybody who wants to run for this office next, you'll, you'll figure out, you can't, you know, you, you, you can't, you get presented with situations that you sometimes just, you just can't win. You just can't win. And then understand that, you know, because knowing what could happen, knowing what, giving you the right to speak, giving you the right to have legal conditions that's tied to a site plan is, is pretty important. Otherwise, you get nothing. So I just wanted to share that. And, and Scott, I know we have a little bit of a chance. You're an attorney and you're a smart guy. Is that, is that a position that you'd say that is pretty fair, that, that there, there's no win in a situation like this? I mean, because that, that's what you're asking me.
I think there's a presumption that the developer goes through, like this one time, that I think
But, but we're not going back to R one zoning? Scott, we are R one zoning. Yeah, but that's, but you have to deal in facts. That's, you know, we kind of talked about this in our meeting. The facts are the fact. You're saying, well, if you go back and visit. No, we are at, and this body looks at, and city council will also look at, we are at R one. That is where we're at. This isn't a go back and change R one.
I understand that. That's not what I meant.
Okay.
What I meant is, there's a perception that the development is going to proceed on the worst-case scenario.
Sure. Okay. Now, now let me ask you this, because this is kind of, and I apologize to the, to the commission, because we kind of are re, re, re-going through this. I want you to help me. Are you willing to take that chance?
Well.
Are you, no, just, no, not well, if not, are you willing to take that chance?
This isn't a cross-examination. I can qualify.
Well, I'm not an attorney, but it kind of is.
Because what I was told at the meeting two weeks ago on Friday night, I was, was this is a done deal. It's going to pass. Don't get screwed.
No.
So if you want to do something, you know, articulate your position and even the developer, we've done.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe what we can do is, this will be before city council.
Yeah, it will be before city council. And so here's what I'm going to do, Mr. Mr. Chairman. Because Scott, you've kind of, I think, you've kind of boxed me in. I'm going to make a motion to deny. And that is my motion right now.
I'll second. We have a motion to deny, has been properly seconded.
Mr. Chairman, I may have missed it. Did we give the applicant the time to rebut?
We did.
Okay.
Yes. And can I ask one point of clarification?
Yes.
I saw the eight-four site plan. I did not see the eight-eleven. Mr. Schultz, you and I had some communication about that. Does the latest greatest site plan submitted by the applicant show twenty-seven or thirty-one?
Mine's real bad. I'm looking at what I'm seeing is thirty-one lots, but four of those are community lots for a total of twenty.
Twenty-seven that can be built, yeah. And that was, what, twenty-five was brought up, but that's, so anyways, Mr. Chairman, there is a full motion on the floor and a second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right. Knows have it. Mr. Matthews has made a motion to approve with conditions. And it has been properly seconded. I just want to read those conditions real quick. I know we've talked about them, but I want to make sure that they're actually all enforceable. Not that I would be the ultimate determiner. Not that I would be the ultimate determiner on that, but just making sure we didn't have only cats allowed or anything like that in there. Any discussion? Mr. Law?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Price, just, just curious, in, in terms of the connection across the streamway, hydrologic sort of report would have to be done. How would you calculate the water volume that would be, you know, when it's at, since it's in the hundred-year floodplain, what would that cross-section of that, whatever the piece of infrastructure, be it a bridge or a, or a road with culverts, how would you figure out how to not create essentially a, a dam at that location?
So what we would do is take the drainage area, determine what the flow rates are, especially for the hundred-year flood event, and then ensure that once we do put that crossing in through there, that that area functions and acts in the same way as it relates to our neighbors in terms of, again, it is in a floodplain, so it does flood in that area. What we don't want to do is to exacerbate the situation. So that's what we would look at, is to see if there's any way that we can improve it, but certainly not make it worse.
Any, we've had plenty of discussion on this. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right, next item on the agenda is case twenty twenty-three dash zero one one eight, and it's located at seventeen-ten South Holt's Claw Avenue, and it's an application to rezone from R-two to C-two. Staff has recommended to deny C-two convenience commercial zone and, I'm assuming it's and to approve UGC urban general commercial zone with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Thank you. Are you familiar with the conditions?
We, Hannah Claire Bogus, Chapel Sponer, and so forth, we did want some clarity on the conditions. We, we weren't sure if the conditions included staff's suggestion that the whole property be rezoned or if it was just the piece we were asking for.
It's just the piece that the applicant's requesting. Does not include adjoining property.
That we are.
So the conditions only apply to what's being rezoned.
Understood. Then we are fine with the conditions, yes.
Thank you. And I'd asked before, but will ask again, is there any opposition present? What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to accept the staff's recommendation for UGC with conditions, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next case is twenty twenty-three dash zero one one nine. It's located at five-ten South Willow Street, and it's an application to rezone from R-four to C-two convenience commercial zone. And staff has recommended to deny the applicant's request. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Mr. Schultz?
Yes, this is twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three one nineteen, a request to rezone existing R-four zone to C-two convenience commercial zone. Really proposed use of this property is a non-owner occupied short-term vacation rental. It's approximately zero point one five acres in size. Number of units is one. That's a density of six point six dwelling units per acre. Looking at the zoning map, there's a mixture of zones in this area from R-four, UGC, and RTZ in this general location. There's been several zoning histories not on this particular piece of property, but on the budding properties, which you see on the screen. This is a five-ten South Willow Street. It's at the intersection of South Willow and Bailey Avenue. It's a single-family detached dwelling. To the north is single unit. To the east is multi-unit residential, and to the south is single unit, and to the west is institutional. This is the site. It's a single-family home. Another view of the site. North of the site. South of the site. East of the site, looking down Macaulay. West of the site, which is institutional use. This is an historic river to ridge area three plan, which is adopted in twenty twenty, which recommends mixed residential place type. Primary uses include two to four units, attached cottage courts, townhouses, multi-unit up to twelve units per lot. Here's a closer view of that place type recommendation, which is mixed residential. The existing zoning, which is R-four, meets the plan, goes a mixed residential. It allows a mix of low, low to high density residential and some commercial uses. The proposed C-two zone is more of a typical of a suburban commercial setting, would not ensure urban development form desired at this location. Applicant can operate a bed and breakfast under the current zoning, which is R-four, which is similar to a non-owner occupied short-term vacation rental. However, this would require the structure to be bought up, broadened up into compliance with commercial building codes. The UGC zone will be a more appropriate urban form at this location. Since the primary use is short-term vacation rental, and the use of this property is a single-family detached dwelling, which is not allowed in UGC zoning, you couldn't have a single-family dwelling in UGC zoning, which is just, this is the issue. And we went back and forth with the applicant on what's the most appropriate zone. We end up deciding that C-two is should be the request, but C-two, again, is not really appropriate in this location, so we recommended to deny this request. And the more appropriate zone is the R-four at this location.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for? Just, uh, staff?
Is the commercial building code, is that the primary difference between a bed and breakfast and a STVR?
That's my understanding, that's my understanding was the, the housing, building codes.
Thanks.
And this is one of the, we will start seeing more of these since the non-owner occupied STVRs have to be in the commercial zone like a C-two. Most people have gone to UGCs, but that doesn't allow single-family dwellings.
Councilman Leford? Do you want to cross-examine anybody? All right, just giving, giving you the chance. All right. So you didn't actually have any questions? Oh, I thought you did, sorry. Were there, were there any questions for staff? Okay, we'll hear from the applicant. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Grablin. I'm the owner of five-ten South Willow Street, and I live there. Thanks for hanging with us this afternoon. My husband and I purchased this home for our family at the beginning of twenty twenty-two. It's had a unique pass and most recently has been a church, offices for the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and halfway house. It's really too large for our, our little family, so we split the space in a way that we could rent out a private two-bedroom apartment in the rear and keep the front for ourselves. We did extensive renovations and obtained an owner-occupied STR permit for the guest space. We've had fantastic guests and haven't received any complaints. Hosting guests is great, but living there full-time is a struggle. We are at the corner of two busy thoroughfares where cars and motorcycles speed and fire trucks pass through with blaring sirens. Our yard space is limited, and what we do have is very exposed, and I'm nervous about our dog and toddler's safety. We love the neighborhood but can't see ourselves living here long-term and want to search for acquired or home nearby. We've poured a lot of care and work into the house and don't want to sell it, but would prefer to short-term rent the entire property. With the new STVR ordinance, that can only happen in a commercial zone with an eighteen-month wait period, too. We initially targeted UGC, but were told that you can't have a single-family house there. In discussions with RPA staff, we were steered towards C-two. Given that discussion, I was surprised to see that staff recommended a denial, even though there's C-two, a lot on Macaulay Avenue was just, it's just north of our property. We presented our plan to the neighborhood, and we have received support from the Ridgedale Community Association and acceptance by Councilwoman Kuhn-Rod. As such, we would kindly request planning commission approve the rezoning to C-two.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Is there any opposition present? So will the commission?
I have a question for staff. If this is rezoned UGC, would the building be grandfathered in as an existing use and then could be operated as an STVR? And then the danger, I suppose, would be that...
I'm, I can answer for college enforcement, since the use was never legal anyway. I don't think it'd be grandfathered in because the use of the single family is not allowed in UGC.
But it would be a legal, non-conforming.
Yeah, because I don't think you can then operate STVR on that. I'd defer maybe Dan or somebody has a different opinion, but...
So because it's a non-conforming use, that would put it under additional scrutiny for the STVR permit?
Mr. Anderson?
I, I, I think so because it, it's going from a zone that doesn't allow a home, an absentee or non-owner occupied. It currently has a home stay permit, not an absentee permit. So I believe that city staff would rule that it's an eighteen-month waiting period if it goes to the...
Well, I'm not concerned about the eighteen-month waiting period. I'm concerned that if it goes to UGC, would the fact that it's a non-conforming use still prevent them after the eighteen-month waiting period from operating an STVR?
I don't think LDO would make that determination because it would be existing non-conforming. They're not going to tear the house down.
Exactly.
But they would have to wait eighteen months because it's currently not an absentee permit. And they'd be going from a zone that allows, that doesn't allow absentee to a zone that
Well, I think the eighteen-month is going to kick in no matter what we do because... Yeah. I'm not worried about the eighteen-month. I think everybody's aware of that. I'm worried that the existing non-conforming use is going to cause issues. And the only issue I can foresee, I'm not the person making this determination at the end of the day, but the issue would be that property would be bought at a later point, and now it's, either has to be rezoned back to a house or it has to be torn down, which I'd hate to see because it's a beautiful, beautiful house. Tricky situation.
The, the UGC that's just planned east, is that the CNE housing development where those are like quadplexes?
I think so. I think so.
And they're, they're big houses that are quadplexes and zone UGC because they're multi-unit in each, right?
I think there are four or five units in each one, I believe.
So the form, the form of the house that she has is very similar to the form of the multi-unit.
It's just one unit. I will say staff, we went round and round with this. We also talked to LDO Dallas, trying to determine was there an option?
But I mean, currently, they have two units. They have one unit that they live in, and then they have one.
They have a neighborhood.
Technically, they already are in compliance with UGC in that they have two.
No, UGC, you have to have at least three.
Oh, you have to have at least three?
Is there any possibility to convert it to three units?
No, not, not at the moment. We've, we already added an extra unit. And also for doing the bed and breakfast, it would just be really cost prohibitive to make it a commercial building code. It's hundred and ten years old to add sprinklers, and everything would be tough.
I think CNE properties are built to commercial good.
Yeah, I'm sure they are. Yeah. Mr. Law?
Why STVRs and not, not full-time rental?
Um, that's the model that we went with. We like hosting guests when we travel. We like to use short-term rentals. We have pets, we have a kid, and it's a lot more comfortable to stay in-house. We've also furnished it. Yeah, and it's, we like it. And also for the same reasons that it's tough for us to live there full-time, I don't know if it would be a great full-time home for someone. If someone's staying for a weekend or a week, the noise isn't so bad.
I think C-two convenience commercial could make a lot of sense on the corner with the right conditions. Because I think the point she's making in regards to how our city is changing and how even the opportunities to develop large, really large, single-family detached down Bailey is not what's being developed. What's being developed is multi-unit rental, and the form of it is almost identical. I just think it needs all the right conditions and should be approved in C-two. And I don't know what all those commercial, what all those conditions should be, but of course, the concern would be that it would be at some point demoed and, you know, a four-story gas station go in, which is what it would take to park it. But, but it could be scary in the future if it doesn't have the right conditions.
Just to top my head real quick, you could do a single-family and STVR like we did on UGC.
Or that the existing building has to remain, and that way, if there's, I mean, that kind of covers everything except a dumpster and lighting.
Mr. Anderson?
I mean, if we approve the applicant's request of C-two zoning with the conditions that it be used only for, number one, residential uses, or number two, if permitted, STVR uses?
Did you capture that the building has to stay?
I did not.
Okay.
I have one more question about the STVR regulations. I'm not sure how this works. If they were to rent out the primary unit as a long-term rental, how would that impact the short-term rental? Since the owner is not staying on the property, there is a primary resident that wouldn't comply? Okay. That's what I thought, I'm just making sure.
Yeah, the, the legislation in its final form does not say owner occupied. The applicant has to live on the site. The applicant doesn't have to be the owner, so you can be a resident of a structure and rent out part of it.
All right, we have a motion. Sorry, say that again.
Absentee and non-owner occupied don't mean the same thing. It doesn't have to be occupied by the owner. It has to be occupied by the applicant.
SBR? By the applicant?
Yes.
So theoretically, you could rent it, like, keep the zoning as is, rent it out as a full-time house, and it would be up to whoever you rented to, to rent out that extra unit?